Council will call this meeting to order for the record. It is Wednesday, June 17, 2020, at 1:02.
Council will call this meeting to order for the record. It is Wednesday, June 17, 2020, at 1:02 PM. We'll begin this workshop with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow. Not yet. Councilwoman Strater. Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne. Mayor Simison.
Here. Item two, adoption of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
Three.
Is that good? Yes, it is.
Check, testing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hoagland.
Second the motion.
I have motion, second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it. The agenda is adopted. Item three, City of Meridian FY 2021 budget presentation discussion. I will turn this over to Mr. Todd and the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good afternoon. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for taking time out of your busy days to join us to discuss the fiscal year 2021 budget, workshop day number one. We have provided you the budget workbook, the mayor's balanced budget proposal. We did that, I think, on the beginning of the month, so you've had it for a few weeks. Today, what we're going to do, kind of an agenda approach, is we're going to deliver to you in person a presentation of your budget requests, or what used to be called as enhancements, we're calling budget requests. They're inside your workbook. You'll have each director present to you the budget requests throughout the next four hours. During that time, please engage us with questions. We are here to answer those questions. If we cannot answer the question today, we'll get back to you with an email. If there's any outstanding questions, Brad will summarize them and send them to you via email, so you guys are all in the loop of the answers. Again, you do have the subject matter experts here. Please engage us. We did set up this room, kind of that discussion in a comfortable setting, so again, hopefully this works for us to engage each other with questions. You guys, please engage each other as well. That's why we got everybody together, so you can ask each other questions. You're liaisons for independent departments, so some might not have the answers to each other, but you guys can help each other. That's what we're here for. From a delivery standpoint of growth and demographics, I delivered to you those documents over the last two weeks, about 10 pages worth of information for you guys to digest before today's presentation. We use that data in developing this budget. Again, it is the balanced 2021 mayor's proposal for you. We also use that data to develop our five-year CFP. We wanted to make sure you guys had that data before today's presentation, so you can kind of digest that information. And we also presented to you some of the property tax calculations from a 0% to a 3%, so you guys can see what those impacts are to your taxpayers on average, to the best of our ability. With today's presentation, again, I want to say thank you to Brad and Jenny. They put in a lot of time and effort to get you the budget book as it sits today. I want to thank the mayor. The mayor put in a lot of time as well to get us where we're at. Again, this is a balanced budget for you guys. That is our goal every year, is to deliver you guys a balanced budget for your consideration. Council, you guys have been involved since February, March, April, May. You've been working with us on the base budget, on budget requests, on questions. You've already been sending us. So again, appreciate your dialogue up to this time. And then, obviously, big kudos to the directors and the staff. They're our subject matter experts. We lean on them heavily to develop this budget for you. They're the ones that tell us kind of what they need to make the services successful. And then, at the end of the day, you know, the whole city is a huge thanks for this budget book. I mean, it takes all of us to make this happen. It's not just Robert. It's just not us. It's not just you. It's everybody. So again, go take the opportunity to say thanks to everybody for the time and efforts that they've put into this budget. You know, hopefully, you guys are proud of it. We're proud of the balanced budget that we've proposed to you. I will be handing this off to Brad. Brad's going to run this budget for you this year. He's going to lead us in the direction. Mayor and myself will give some more talking points later on in the agenda. But again, I just want to say thanks to everybody. Thank you to Brad and Jenny. And with that, I'll hand it off to Brad.
Great. Thank you, Todd. Okay, so since we delivered the budget book to you, sorry about that, back at the end of May, there have been some changes that have happened. So each of you guys have a packet. That's, the first page is labeled "budget changes," so we'll go through and we'll update the book. So when we begin here, we're kind of all starting from the same spot here. There are some things in there. I'll just walk through here real quick and just to advise you kind of what has changed. And then, there are also some things that we'll need to pull out of the book and some other things to add to the book, so we will work through that. So to begin with, if you look at the "budget changes" page, you can kind of see where I'm going. We did make some adjustments to the revenue. Now, this revenue plays out on the very first tab, the summary tab in your budget book. We had some assumptions in there that, obviously, this is a living document. As we get more information, we make those adjustments and changes, and so.
All of it?
Yes. So the budget, yes. It's about 11 pages of the budget summary. We'll be swapping out. It looks like, kind of looks like this. You guys can see it. Okay? From a revenue standpoint, while you guys are swapping that out, you can see that we increased the overall revenue budget by $558,000. That was based on some updated information we had on new construction. We also decreased it a little bit later by about $8,000 due to some more input we got from Maida County. And then, just yesterday, we got some more information on a grant. We increased the revenue for grant money by a little over $1,000, $1,800. That constitutes all the revenue changes to the budget summary. From an operating, there have been some changes since we've issued the book. From an operating expense standpoint, we got some more information, some RFPs and whatnot finalized on our janitorial, which increased the cost citywide, so that multiple departments are impacted. We didn't print off a new summary for each department. Rather, we're just, this is kind of categorizing and telling you, you know, what changed overall. So it increased the budget by about $61,000 and change. The second item, we added $500 in a one-time per-person bonus for all FTs of the city. You can see in the pages there that, you know, the impact of the general fund was Our community development was impacted by 22,500, and our enterprise fund was impacted by 63,500, or a total city impact of 262,500. That is also noted on a separate item on your budget summary. Just continuing on down the list, we also updated in our other government, they have a, had a professional services line. We increased the budget by 24,000 due to a contract update that hadn't been captured. We also reduced, on a related matter, the professional services budget for our public works department by 12,000. You guys have the budget book, or the budget handed, so that's swapped out. Can we turn to the HR tab of your budget book? There was some performance management software. It's a green piece of paper in the HR section. We originally, when we handed the book out, we had a budget request, which is something new to the budget we hadn't had before, for performance management software. If you guys could pull that out or put an X on it, we are not moving forward with that budget request. Now, there is in your packet that I handed out to you, the only green page in there, it is for dental vision, healthcare, funding reserve. You can see that, if you could put that in the place where, or behind the performance-based software, and then that performance-based software, you can do what you like with it, throw it away, it won't be part of this year's budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Byrne.
Just kind of a point of process, if there's a quick question on a point that's just said, we just ask it right now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Brad, is this a request that's being kicked to a later year, or it's just being removed and reconsidered to do something else?
Mr. Mayor, that's more important. It's moved to a different year.
Okay.
So it's not this year, in a future year.
Okay.
No question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Rationale, financially driven, maybe we'll get into that during that department's presentation. Do you prefer that, or?
No, we can, we can answer that question for you. We have, inside of our comprehensive financial plan, we have some software upgrades for the HR department. We felt that aligning that performance with that software upgrade was in a better decision than trying to do two separate projects at two separate times.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question. Cool. Thank you. And the very last thing here, we actually updated the, and there's a, you'll see, you'll find a dues worksheet. That goes at the very end of your budget book in the auxiliary, supporting documents section. The VRT, which is the value ride, we actually reduced their cost by $52,000. We got an updated quote from them, and so should probably be one of the last pages in the overall budget book. If you could pull out the old one and then replace it with the new one. Should be in the supporting documents section. And then, there's a couple more things. You'll see, it's got the graphs. Is that the computer replacement?
Yes.
Yes. That also goes in the supplement area, in the very back of the book. You could put that behind the dues sheet that we just brought, and all that goes in the back of the book. I think that captures everything. Did I get everything? Did I miss one? Are we good?
You got it.
Councilman Cavanagh.
This does replace an addition to.
This is an addition to. Correct.
Thanks, Dean. Sorry.
Great.
Read my mind.
Good call. Okay. With that, we, you know, that basically is the updates since we issued you the book. I'll pass the time over to Mayor for his comments.
Thank you. And I'm not going to reiterate everything that Todd said. I want to try to keep this on track as much as we can, so you left me about 30 seconds. I would take a few more minutes on that, though, just to kind of walk through, at least so you have an idea. I know I've spoken with many of you throughout this process in terms of what type of budget and some of the principles that I've tried to follow in that process, but I just want to say them publicly, so that other people know. But I think we prepared a budget that follows some important principles in it and addresses potential impacts to our budget as we move forward. The follows are save-before-we-spend mentality, preparing for the future. Sometimes that's not always in capital, that is in personnel costs, that we have to prepare for future costs that we can't absorb in only one year. It meets our long-term goals regarding growth, especially for additional public safety needs that we'll have in the future, in my opinion. I think the biggest thing out there, from my perspective, is not recommending not taking the 3% at this time. I don't believe now is the time. I think the economy is hurting. People are out of work. Our businesses are trying to figure out how they remain open and meet their ongoing needs. Personally, again, I think we all have our own opinion, but I don't think we've seen the worst impacts of COVID-19 yet on our economy, on our state, on our communities. I think that, I think we will see more happen as we get into the fall, and I don't know what the impacts will be, quite frankly. I don't think any of us do. But I don't think the, I don't think the worst is behind us. I think it's still yet to come. And by not taking the 3%, we have an opportunity to participate in the CPAC program, and I'll talk about that in a second. The 3% budget, by not taking it, we are not growing our base, from that standpoint. As you're aware, it does not include an increase to employees besides a one-time, one-time increase for this year. You can call it a bonus, you can call it whatever you would like, but that's what this is. It's not growing the base, which is where I correlate the 3%. If you're going to grow the base and do it ongoing, then you need to look at taking the 3%, in my humble opinion. But as our HR director will probably share in a little bit, the $500 one-time is tracking roughly, if you look at the mean of employees, where the CPI is at this point in time, which is about 0.8%. That is going to fluctuate up and down, probably, for the next year in COVID. So it does at least provide something that can either address keeping them whole or help offset some of the costs that may be occurring through the economy at this point in time. It's also a way to show our appreciation to our employees. If we want to show that we are mindful to the community by not taking the 3% from the struggles that they are facing, yet at the same time, provide a way that we can say, let our employees know that we appreciate them, but at the same time, we can't ask our residents and taxpayers to pay more for the services that they are currently receiving, which is what we would be doing by growing, providing more than a one-time increase to salaries. Throughout the times when we sat down and we went through all the base budgets, I think we worked hard to lower the delta between the budget and the actuals using those three- and five-year projections. I think that that really helped us get more in line. I know that our CFO has often talked about our spending rates to the actual rates, you know, projected to actuals. So I put a real emphasis on that when we would go through. Sometimes they were down, sometimes they were up. There's always a question if those are even appropriate to be in the budget. But from my perspective, if they were in the budget, we tried to get it closer to what the actuals were, you know, whether that was Idaho Power, Intermountain Gas. I think that they kind of got tired of me saying, "Take that down by $10," because that's not where it is. It's more than $10, but that's what it was. We adjusted our training and travel quite a bit in this budget to follow the, to meet the following principles. We maintain training for employees. Again, I did not tell the departments they could not allow their employees to be trained. But we did eliminate nonessential travel and training out of the state. If it was something that is required for them to keep up a certification or a license, that is included in this budget. We are not telling people they cannot do that. But much of the travel training is being modified and budgeting for conferences that likely won't even happen in 2021. I don't, I just got an update from my college. They moved our reunion from October to next June. What will happen in next June? I don't even know if it will happen then, but people are already making those things where they're pushing out their gatherings, and they will likely be online or otherwise throughout this most year, so I don't think that the travel impact is going to be as much, because I think we would be budgeting for things people would not actually be doing, in my viewpoint. There's also been a reduction, in my opinion, equivalently with the anticipated in sales tax revenue. So last time Todd and I spoke, I think the travel training was reduced by about half a million. That's about what we've had to reduce down our expected sales tax revenue in this next year's budget. Wasn't it meant to be a direct correlation? No. But it does keep in line. To me, it shows that this is a, we've seen a downturn in revenue, so we've made a downturn in our company's spending. It's something that we can continue to bring back on in future years as the sales tax revenue rebounds in an appropriate way, and I'm hopeful that by FY 2022, we will be seeing that. We have found other ways to show our employees they are valued in this budget, in my opinion. And you'll hear about those from HR, when we talk about some of the changes and recommendations from both benefits of compensation. I'm just going to touch on a couple of those very briefly. But we propose additional vacation, creating additional vacation hours each month that you work. A reduction removal of co-pays in our healthcare benefits through a new element to that. It can either be a reduction or elimination, depending on who your doctor is, for lack of a better way to put it. And we focus some changes for our employees that they have access, ability to not be here during times when they're either at the most exciting, such as the birth of a newborn or trying with the loss of somebody. So those are some of the things that you're going to hear, but these are ways that we can try to support our employees during times, and I think there's some other things you're going to hear, but just want to focus on those. This budget, at least in the requests that you're going to hear, does include funding for roads. I'll talk about that one a little bit more when we get into it, but this included in the CFP and why this has not been a traditional effort for the city. We have done it in the past with the one-time projects in Locust Grove. We've shown a history of investing. I just think that with where we are, with the needs for roads in our community, that showing that commitment is an important part of where we're going to need to be if we want to help address the issue sooner rather than later and allow growth to continue, or quite frankly, just to meet the expectations that our residents have to connect roads, sidewalks, pathways, through schools, parks, and other things, which is, currently doesn't exist in our community. I said this before, I'm just going to reiterate it. If council does wish to pursue raises for employees in terms of an ongoing budget, I am going to request you could do that through looking at taking the 1%, 2%, or 3%, whatever correlates to that number. I don't, I don't believe, and I know, I'm going to speak for Todd, he definitely would not support, you know, doing an ongoing expense without finding an ongoing revenue offset, from that standpoint. He's going to tell you you should take the 3% anyways, regardless of what this budget says, or what is out there. So just so we're clear on that point. What plan in taking your thunder?
You're good.
And why I think new construction should not fund the current ongoing costs, but it needs to help us prepare for our needs for the future that we have, as you all are aware in the conversations we have had about the need for new fire stations, and that's going to correspond to additional police personnel and other things. That's what new construction should cover. If it's incumbent upon us to support our employees today, then look at doing that through the 1%, 2%, or 3%, in my opinion. Next slide, and then I'll be quick. So why, and why does this also matter not to take the 3%? Well, it allows us to participate in the CPAC, the Coronavirus Financial Advisory Committee opportunity for our city, which essentially takes nine months of police and fire personnel and allows that to be rebated back to our taxpayers in the form of a credit on their property taxes later this year. It does not impact new construction the following year, which was my big hesitation towards saying that I think we should participate in it, but by it not impacting new construction, and I'm not going to say the interim committee won't impact that, but this program won't impact new construction next year, and I think it's a wise thing for us to do to, again, support the community, which is, is and will be likely struggling from the ability to meet all their financial needs in their households. So with that, I appreciate your indulgence to allow me to get on my soapbox for a few minutes, but I'd be happy to entertain and answer questions throughout this, but I will leave it primarily to the directors to respond to your inquiries, but there's a handful that I have my direct finger on that I will touch on. So with that, I'm happy answering questions now, or turning back over and we'll get going.
Great.
Thank you, Robert. For my next few slides, I'm going to go over the assumptions in the mayor's budget proposal. And these are the assumptions that we used to propose to you the next workshop and this workshop. This is where you have the opportunity to talk to us, discuss it, engage us, change some of the assumptions if we need to. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what we used to develop the budget as it is presented to you today. Property taxes. We are proposing, as Robert stated, a 0% of our allowable 3% tax increase. This is just a slide that shows you what our current levy rate is right now at 308. That is as of today. Again, we are proposing a 0% in this budgetary document, which generates zero, zero new revenues from a 0% allowable. If we did adopt that approach, we project our levy rate to be at 295. Again, so that is what we project. Again, it will change as soon as Ada County gives us the final, final, final numbers, but that's our projection where we think it would be, based on the proposal. As Robert stated, he knows that I promoted to you to take the 3%. I've made that comment to three of you over the last number of years. I believe 3% is necessary for cost of doing business here at the City of Meridian. If you were to consider that, that would be about a $1 million addition to the city's revenue stream. We project that to be about $8.23 a year for every $100,000 of property tax value for the average homeowner, or 69 cents a month. And we project our levy rate to be about 303 if we were to consider the 3%. So again, informational purposes only there, just wanted to make sure I supplied it. I provided this information in the email. I provided this information in the email two weeks ago to you guys, so nothing new here. I just wanted to kind of go over the assumptions. We are presenting a 0% on this particular budget. Some other assumptions that we have in here from a revenue standpoint, we increased our water and sewer sales by 3.74% based on our growth data that we provided you a couple of weeks ago as well. We did reduce our development revenues from a growth standpoint and also a COVID-19 impact. So we did reduce development revenues by 5%. Robert touched on sales tax. And then liquor revenue, we increased by 8.14% annual, year-over-year, and that's based on the guidance that we've received from the state and other agencies as well. Some other assumptions in regards to expenditures. Again, Robert touched on the $500 per employee. Brad touched on it as well. So that is inside the base budget or the budget proposal that you have today. Robert also did touch basis on the other three. So we have zero market or merit adjustments in this budget proposal today. Zero changes to the police staff plan, zero changes to the fire union staff plan. So that's the proposal that we have with the assumptions. And then the medical benefits are tracking about 5.8% to 12.1% in the base, in the budget that you have today. So these are the, some of the budgetary assumptions that we wanted to touch on for you for today's presentation. Again, with that, that is my portion of the assumptions presentation for you guys. Happy to answer any questions now or later if they come up later. We're here for you. If there's no questions, I'll hand it back to Brad to kind of start the meat of the presentation for you guys.
We good? Cool. All right, for my portion, just a couple of housekeeping items, kind of what to expect over the next, for remaining time. We're going to have each of the directors present their related budget requests, so they'll come and join us here. And, you know, when it's appropriate to talk through, answer questions about any of the budget requests that they're bringing forward. We don't, we will not be presenting any of the base budget items. Those are the pieces that we went through in February or March and April in our base budget meetings. We comb through those. Will not be presenting any of the information in there. It is in your books. You have by department. We're also not going to be presenting any portion of the replacements. Those items have been previously approved by council. Those are items that are generally end-of-life and need to be replaced. You guys, if you're, you're welcome to ask questions about it, any of it, but we're not going to be touching on those things. The meat of our discussion today is going to be surrounding the budget requests that we have. There's a good number of them, and each of the department directors will be presenting those. From a general standpoint, I'm going to go a little bit over the base budget as an overview. We're going to summarize kind of what we're seeing year-to-year and where we're at as far as, you know, the base versus replacements and budget requests. So you'll be able to see some numbers that way. And then, then we'll bring up the department directors, you know, as needed, to go over their individual budget requests. So to paraphrase the movie Shrek.
We could start.
You know, there's a lot to the city budget that most people don't realize, you know, there's a lot to it. So I'd like you to kind of think of it like an onion. It's not going to, it doesn't stink. Budget doesn't stink. It, it's not going to make you cry or shouldn't make you cry. Hopefully it won't make you cry. It better not make you cry. The budget's not going to grow little white hairs if you leave it out too long, thankfully. What it does have in, you know, common with, what the budget does have in common with an onion is layers. There are a lot of layers, and we'll be going into the layers. And kind of from a formatting standpoint, you see kind of the bigger overall layers we're going to talk about. We have the general fund. We have community development, and we have enterprise fund. We're going to be talking about each of those individually. And then within each of those layers, there's also a component of base budget. There's replacements, and, you know, there's budget requests. Again, base budget, those are the items we went over in March and April during our base budget meetings. We comb through them in detail. You know, when we add on top of that the replacements, those are just, you know, those are computers that need to be replaced, those are vehicles that are out for replacement, those type of things. And then layered on top of that, you get all of the budget requests for the department, for the fund. So for general fund, the total general fund you'll see makes up all three of those components. So to get to our first graph, from a total city standpoint, you'll see that our budget has grown from about 13.68%. It's gone from about, you'll see about $94 million up to about $107 million. Now, we'll peel this back and you can see exactly what is behind this. It should be pretty evident. If it's not, please, please let me know and ask. So to peel it back to the first layer, let's talk about the general fund. If you would like to follow along, you're welcome to. In the budget summary in the front that we just switched out, you can see the different layers that we're talking about here. Highlighted in yellow, you'll see that's, that is the base budget on page one of that document. That kind of corresponds with what we're talking about here. And, you know, when we get into the different areas, we can, you can follow along. So for the total general fund budget, so that includes all the base, the replacements, and the budget request, our total budget of the general fund is going down by 3.77%. So let's go down a layer. So if we look at the base budget from the general fund, that actually increased slightly by 5.27%. Just over, we went from about just under $45 million to about 46. That's mainly because we hired 17 and a half people last year. When you look at our replacements, our replacements, you can see are $2 million, 64,000. You can see what makes, what makes up that number. And that's actually down year-to-year by 6%. We're replacing some cars. There's some fire equipment, some police cars. When we get to the budget requests, so these represent items that are new, something we typically haven't seen yet. Budget requests are, you know, at 6.8 million. The majority of that are in capital requests, which are typically one-time in nature. We also have, you know, one-time, and there's some personnel that we're adding.
Please.
So on page five of this new summary sheet, the yellow stripe is where that 6.8 million is?
Yes. So on page five, this 6.8 is right there. You're right. Yep. You can see adding.
Yep.
Good question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
This is kind of an informal format where we are able to.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. Do you guys feel like it's necessary to go through me or just, just talk?
Until we screw it up.
Totally up to you.
Yeah. Well, yes, as long as you guys don't mess it up and respectful, you don't need to go through me to do this.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Brad. I have, I know we're not specifically going to talk. We're planning on discussing all the replacements, but I would like to have kind of a holistic discussion about some of the replacements.
Sure.
Whenever that is a good time. Maybe not right now, but at some point, I wanted to just sort of talk about that.
We can, we can talk about that if you like. That's, that's fine. You know, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. So I appreciate the analysis on replacing the computers. Maybe when we get to the IT department, would be the right time to get into that a little bit.
Sure.
But some of the things that I'm curious about, we talked about the average life of computer replacements. Want to understand if we're sort of proactively driving replacements or if, let's say, you know, people get a little bit longer timeframe out of something, if they have the ability to sort of wait to replace it. In other words, people need to make a request, and I wanted to just understand, is that five-year timeframe kind of an industry standard? And is there a savings opportunity there or how to look at that?
That's a good question. Thank you. I know on the very end, at the end of the budget book, we added the computer replacement. I believe that's typically every five years. Worked on with, you know, Dave provides that, right? Dave, you want to address that? Welcome. You might need to turn on the mic.
Right in the center, if you'd sit right.
Yeah, right. We need a chair right there, right?
I didn't need a dark one, so.
Councilman Strater, can you repeat your question for me as far as, there was multiple facets to that question, so.
There were. Yeah. So I, you know, I'm just, and I don't want anyone to take anything the wrong way because I'm just maybe going to be pressure testing a little bit, which I think is our role. So what I wanted to understand was, is our average life of five years for computers and IT equipment, how does that, contextualize that for me? How does that compare to the industry as a whole? Do you feel like that is an appropriate average life? Are we proactively replacing equipment or are we having people, you know, hold up their hand and say, this just isn't working anymore? It's more than, is it like when it's over five years, you're eligible for a replacement? Just give me flavor for how we.
Okay. So going back to industry standard, for the most part, if you look at most organizations, you're typically somewhere in the three-year range. So being government, we try to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and so we have extended that. But on the flip side, we also buy an extended warranty to help cover if we have problems with the hardware. So that's kind of where we're at. We're pretty comfortable with that at this point. We have contemplated changing things up a little bit there, but not in the way of lengthening out further because of problems. So to give an example of how we handle things, when they're due for replacement, they hit that five-year mark. Typically, we're looking at how the hardware is performing, how it's working for the user, if we're seeing lots of problems, whether that's performance-related problems that are impacting employees' ability to do their job, or whether that's actual failures of the hardware that we have to send in for repairs. In this specific budget, our, our replacement budget for computers this year has a lot of what we call MDTs, which are the ruggedized units that we use in police and fire vehicles. And I would say half the cost, if not a little bit more, of our replacements for this year are going in fire apparatus or police vehicles. And those are due to hardware failures that are happening almost daily. To give an example, there was one point, I think last month, where we had seven police vehicles down because of computers dying in them. So while we're comfortable with it the way it is and don't anticipate any changes, that is an area that we're a little concerned about because we don't like seeing emergency service vehicles out of commission for, because of hardware. I'm not sure if that answered you fully, but maybe you can, if there's.
I think it helped me a little bit. Do you know, or you could get back to me, but what cost is associated with the warranty portion of what you're talking about? And is that individual warranties on specific pieces of equipment or are those warranties on classes of equipment as a whole, i.e. all of the police equipment has one warranty?
Gotcha. Councilman Strater. So what we do is we purchase a five-year warranty with our computers up front, and those are individual warranties tied to each individual machine, but that's been our standard for a number of years just because we do intend on keeping the computers four or five years. If we go beyond that, it becomes a lot more costly. Because we buy it up front and we're usually buying computers in bulk, the cost is substantially lower. For a desktop, on average, we're under $100, somewhere in the $60, $90 range for that extended warranty. For laptops, it's a little bit more, but usually somewhere around $150 or so. For MDTs, it's closer to 300, I think, but sometimes it's high as 500. Those units, however, on, individually, run usually around $4,000 to $6,000. So a $300 warranty on a $5,000 piece of hardware doesn't seem that bad in our.
Just to, just to push back a little bit, I guess my request would be if you could look as a, probably we did that in the past, made a lot of sense, we might have had the scale that we have today, but if you would just go back and take a look at the total for the warranty that we have and whether we're now at a scale that we can predict the number of replacements that we need to do on equipment, and if in fact it would save us money to simply take care of those replacements, or if in fact the warranty is paying for itself, if that makes sense on certain types of equipment.
Gotcha. I can definitely evaluate that, but I know that we have done analysis on MDTs specifically a few years ago, and we.
Sounds like we need it.
Yeah. There was, there was actually, before we moved to this latest generation of hardware, we were talking about two to three times we were sending the average unit back to, for repairs. So considering most of those repairs range from $600 to $1,300, it was well worth it.
Got it. So. I have one more replacement-oriented.
You're good.
Topic. Slightly different, but I'm just getting to get them all out of the way, so we'll be done with the replacement thing, at least for me. Have we thought about, is there a synergy to centralizing the management of all of our vehicles, i.e.? And I understand some of them are very specialized, that may not make a ton of sense, like, you know, fire equipment and stuff, maybe you can't do that with, but have we thought about, you know, at some point, is there a synergy to trying to centralize at least maybe the non-specific use vehicles, the repairs, procurement?
Yes.
Okay.
We have thought about it.
Yeah.
And we are tracking and monitoring, and eventually there will reach a point in time where it makes sense, but to my knowledge, we have not yet gotten there, otherwise you would see. Since it becomes cheaper to do that.
Yeah.
Or more effective, then we will.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. It just surprised me. We have so many now, it just surprised, okay. That's something that I'm curious about. So thank you. I'm good.
We're also looking at, you know, there are opportunities because, you know, there are, there's fleet services in Nampa and our surrounding communities that we can take advantage of or partner with. We're looking at that as well, as opposed to bringing or creating our own shop as well. So we are tracking all of that. Yeah. Good question.
Well, Dave is here. I wanted to follow up on Councilman Strater's questions about updates and whatnot. How much of that, Dave, is driven by software updates where the hardware is no longer compatible or can't handle the load? I mean, oftentimes, it seems like that's really what drives, and is five years too long sometimes, or is it just really dependent how often they come up with updates and changes?
Councilman Hoagland, it does depend a lot on what software we're utilizing and what solutions we're looking to implement at the city. But we have found that that five-year does tend to meet that sweet spot where we're not playing catch-up. As an example, the, the computer aided dispatch system that Ada County hosts, when they went to implement that system years ago, there were many agencies that found, hey, look, we need to go out and replace a bunch of hardware because it will not, the software will not run on this hardware. And we didn't, weren't in that situation. We actually were, okay, our hardware is up to date, we can run it, and it works well. So we feel pretty comfortable at this point where we're at. But falling behind that, we could get ourselves into that situation where we're incurring costs kind of based off of that, hey, software is updating and we aren't to that level. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions? Any other?
One more, just since Dave's here, on replacements. I've seen in multiple departments, we've got Acrobat Throw listed as a, as a replacement. I recall in the past, and we've had kind of large-scale software replacements, they've come as an enhancement, as I recall. So I'm just curious, why the replacement? Why is it listed as a replacement this year? And I know you've talked in many years about the software as a service, but I just wanted to understand, is this a software piece that we will own, or is that a piece that will have an ongoing maintenance or service cost in future years' budgets?
Fair enough. Thank you, Councilman Cavener. So in general, if we're talking about replacing existing functionality in software with something that provides the same thing, we typically do that as a replacement unless we're directed otherwise by the finance department. So over the last few years, we've had a number of them. We had Office, Microsoft Office Suite here, last year, the year before, we've had Windows, we've had whatever. Most of those have come through as replacements, where we have had a couple come through as enhancements just because they're almost a separate cost. Windows 10 was one that we did last year that was an enhancement, but most of the time, we do them as replacements. Going back to that subscription piece with Adobe Acrobat specifically, that is going to a subscription-based option. And because of that, we actually worked with all the department directors throughout the city to say, okay, where is there a need? Where do you need to do this, have this software to do, you know, for people to do their jobs versus where is this something, or where people had it and not really need it, need it for their business function? So we did streamline that a lot and reduce the amount of. amount of costs that were projected on that front. So.
Just to follow up, Dave, is it to be then assumed that future, we won't see future replacements for this software tool because it's a ongoing cost, it's a subscription, it would be viewed as a subscription cost built in as part of the base budget moving forward?
That is correct. Moving forward, it will be part of the base budget. We felt it was important to call out this year specifically.
Which I appreciate. Thanks.
Good question.
For Dave, I assume you track tickets that come in for software concerns, hardware concerns. How much does?
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Okay. I'll restate my question for Dave. I assume you track the support tickets for all of the software and hardware concerns. How much does that play into the decisions for the replacements and the timing and whatnot?
It plays into them a lot. We tend to be, after about the four-year mark, sometimes the three-year mark, we tend to see a lot more software and hardware-related issues on computers in general. And so, that's something that we take into consideration. Not only that, but we also tend to track which employees are reaching out to us more frequently for related issues. And those tend to trend as well with hardware that's older and has more problems. So, that's definitely part of our evaluation criteria.
Any other questions? Cool. Good.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
You're great.
Stay up here. All right. So, with, thank you for those questions. That was really helpful. Moving on to budget requests. So, looking at budget requests, we have about $6.8 million in budget requests that we'll be reviewing individually here. You can see they're listed actually on, in the budget summary. We'll make, we'll go into those individually. It's actually down from 11 million last year. That makes up the general fund. Moving on to our community development, there's not a lot going on here. So, from a total standpoint, our community development actually is increased by 2.66 percent. This is basically, you know, due to wages. Our operation, we're pretty flat operationally. You know, wages increased year to year, what you'll find here. You'll see, from a base standpoint, which includes the wages, you see it's up by 2.3 percent year to year. Just from just under $6 million to just over $6 million. Replacements were actually down year to year. We only just have some computers we're replacing. You can see the details of those on page six of that budget summary that I gave you That's, that's actually down year to year. We were about $27,000 last year. So. And then the final layer is the budget request. They have one budget request, which we'll cover here in a few minutes. It's for one person. So, we'll go into that here in detail. Moving forward to enterprise fund, the total enterprise fund budget, year to year, went up 49 percent. Right?
Yes.
But, you know, you'll see a lot of that is from budget requests. Because if you look at the base budget, the base budget increased by about 4.8 percent. Majority of that is, you know, increase in wages and whatnot. From a replacement standpoint, sorry. We're actually flat from a replacement standpoint. About 2.4 million this year. We had about the same last year. So, we're kind of even kill. From a replacement standpoint, 2.2 of the 2.4 is in infrastructure projects, utility infrastructure. The rest are made up of, you know, a vehicle and, you know, some software replacements, computers and And then, from a budgetary standpoint, I think we have about 26 budget requests, you know, totaling $21.5 million. That is, year to year, a lot higher. We were around 14, 15 million last year. So, that's the bulk of the increase that we saw a few slides With that, I'll add, you know, stop for any questions.
I'm just going to make a comment, because one of my challenges when I was looking through the budget is enhancements from last year show up in this year's base budget, which showed the increase to the base budget. So, you know, we went back and forth. It's like, that should show up in FY '20, not in FY '21, because FY '21's my budget, but you guys did it last year. But anyways, that's what you see a lot of this increase, is the significant investment in personnel that was made last year, why, especially in the general fund, why that, those numbers are showing up more so in the, than in the operational or other costs for this year. So, I at least got off my second soapbox. And I would just like to point out who has the best socks in the room. Anybody have socks that have a cape attached to them? I think a demonstration during the break is going to be necessary, but.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I was, to give you, we're going to transition over to the budget requests. We're going to start with the enterprise fund. Gentlemen, you're welcome, ladies, whoever's coming up for that, you're welcome to come up now. As far as kind of procedure, what to, what to expect, we're going to start off with Public Works, Work Through Water, and the wastewater budget requests. The budget requests you'll see are going to look somewhat like here. You're going to see, you know, the name of the budget request. And if you want to follow on, these are actually in order in Public Works. So, the first one you should see in the Public Works will be the inspection software, and then we go to the next one. So, we try to keep them in order. And on your budget summary, when you're looking at your budget summary, you should also see them kind of in the order that way. So, it should be hopefully easy enough to look at. If you want to follow along, we'd encourage that, because here you have the different bullet points that departments will be going over. But there's also, you know, the narrative and some of the other information that is in each of the budget requests. You know, you're welcome to follow along if you, if you like. So, with that, kind of what to expect, all the slides look like this in one way or, you know, one way or another, you know, obviously content is going to change, but the format should be similar to what you're seeing right here. With that, I will actually turn it over to Dale.
And for the record, I don't think, I don't think Public Works has had one question asked by council in the last two years for your budget. So, I encourage you to take that train.
Hey, Dale.
Here we go.
We'll give you more money if you can give us an enhancement under $100 bucks.
Under $100 bucks?
Ooh. That's the trade-off.
Challenge is on. I can't, I can't get there. I can't get there this year.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the FY ' '21 budget requests and enhancements to you today. I appreciate the mayor's comments that the base budget used in the previous slides did not include the enhancements that you approved last year for us. And we did have some incremental labor that was associated, you know, with that, that made up a good chunk of that 4.5 percent that you saw. We also had and have now trued up the infamous water meter issue. So, we had the amendment this year for the additional meters. We underbudgeted last year. That also was reflecting. So, you got a couple of things like that, bring that in to explain that. And actually, we're down, we've actually went down in our, in our total base budget requirements, if you exclude those items. But before I, before I begin, I want to just tell you that this is a large and complex department, running multiple utilities, engineering support and services, and environmental. And so, we touch on a lot of things. And the preparation of this effort actually starts each year in our CFP discussions, which go back to last August and September, where we try to spend appropriate time particularly defining the next fiscal year. That then picks up again in February and, and brings us to this point in time. Obviously, cannot do it without a tremendous amount of help and assistance from staff. I've got behind me our, our division leadership with Warren in Engineering, Laura Liofer, Operations, Alex over all the Budget and Finance and Business Division. And, and of course, anchoring the entire process for budgets is Connie Moon. So, we appreciate all of her work in getting there. We attempt each year to start from a zero-base budget approach. So, we look at what we've done, but we try to use that only as a guide. One of the reasons why you see a significant increase, particularly in the capital, is the city has now, for, I guess, generations instituted the spend then, or saved and spend kind of methodology. And so, what you see is years like the last couple, where we've seen substantially declined capital spending. And now, we're on the upswing again. And, and those are always typically in support of either growth-related initiatives, or in this case, substantial regulatory initiatives that we must, we must face. So, we'll, I'll do my best to answer those questions. And if not, the subject matter lies behind me or up, up not far away, and we'd be happy to get to the level of detail in answering those questions as, as necessary. So, we have 26 requests this year that I'm going to walk you through that cover the wastewater, water, City Hall, and eventually the streetlight departments. So, with that, I'll start with the first one here. So, this is supporting our inspections division, construction management. These are the folks that are out in the field. They're watching both the city capital infrastructure projects, as well as all the development projects that are occurring in our community. And the request here is for some software that allows them to have better access to the various pieces of information and data required. It gives them that access in the field. It puts it all in one location. It allows each of them to upload information. It's accessible by the broad audience and offers shared documentation. It's a request for $6,700 to get it initially set up, and then it's a little over $6,000 annually for that, for that software service. So, we look at it as an efficiency improvement that really offers great access to the information that they need in the field. So, with that, I guess I would stand for a question on that project?
I have questions.
Yes.
Um, what? I apologize. I'm sorry. Is this a, this is a new software subscription?
Correct.
This is the first year, correct?
This is our new one.
Is there any way to get an idea or quantify how much staff time that actually changes, or how much, an estimate of time saved on the staff's part by having a service like this, if it's going to be a request that's made annually for subscription and not a one-time?
I suppose you could probably make an estimate. We're talking about seven individuals who are out in the field, scattered around the city. So, we have extensive expense in this. This would prevent the requirement for them to be coming back into City Hall and gathering some of the documents that they have to gather today. So, really, it's a, it's a, it's an efficiency improvement, cost avoidance kind of improvement. We did not go through an exercise to estimate that this was going to save X amount of dollars. But when you look at several hundred thousand dollars worth of labor that's being expended, $6,000 is pretty minimal. And I assure you that we'll gain those efficiencies in, you know, in the field and in the opportunity to do more inspections, more complete inspections while they're out in the field. They rarely come back to City Hall for a lot of the things today, and this will further that. The next, any questions? Okay. The next public works project is actually not in the department that I manage, and that it is in the land development group. And Bruce is going to go ahead and come up and speak to that now. Bruce?
Sure. Okay. Do you have a question?
No, I just was wondering why. I creeped the corner because I wondered what you were doing in this section.
They're trying to convert him.
Yeah. Mayor and council, thank you for, thank you for this opportunity. It's a good question, Councilman Burt. The land development division of community development is funded out of the enterprise fund. We do primarily the sanitary sewer, water, reclaim water, plan reviews for Public Works through our, through our plan review process. It's, it was, that division used to be part of Public Works. We then formed community development. We brought planning, community, or, excuse me, development services, so that's building and land.
Yeah.
Together, just for better continuity for projects.
Got it.
Okay. So, Mayor and council, this request is for the third and final phase of a software implementation for our Project Docs software. We began in 2018 as part of our, what we call the Project Pivot. And that's when we, we brought the building section, much of the building section in-house. We purchased Project Docs, which is an electronic plan review We, the initial Phase 1 was to get the building section up and running on this software. We did that. We completed that in 2019. We rolled into Phase 2 of the, the plan, which was to bring the planning division into, into that software. That project is finishing up this year. And so, Phase 3, which is the subject of this budget request, is for the third and final phase, which is to integrate the land development section into that software. This software allows our customers to apply for, communicate, do basically all of their plan, submit it electronically from their offices. We do our plan review electronically. Customers can track any time of day or night, the progress of their, their projects, plan reviews, that sort of thing. So, with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Bruce, just to refresh my memory, there's funds being carried forward that are left over from this year's project, and this will supplement those funds to enable them to do it. So, it's a much larger cost than what's shown.
That is.
Using a majority of funds.
That is correct, Mayor. We do anticipate that we are going to have, what was the number, $19,631 left over from the planning portion of the project. So, this would supplement that to complete Phase 3.
Great.
I do have a question, but it's going to be directed towards finance based on this. This is, because we see it from time to time, there's contingency built in. And often, if that is not needed, is that just swept back into, back to the enterprise fund in this case, or general fund, depending on where it is? That was my assumption, but I just wanted to be sure.
Rod, great assumption.
Okay.
Correct assumption.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bruce. Okay. So, we're going to walk you through now the water utility and the budget requests associated with that. The first one is a request for $15,000 for an arc flash study. This is a required effort that must occur anywhere where we have high-voltage panels in place. This money provides for a full evaluation of those, assessment of the risk, and proper. labeling and ultimately training for our employees on how to approach those kinds of instrument panels. So we do this now on a five-year basis. This is the year that we need to get it done. And there is a companion project on the wastewater side that you'll see. So what we did is that we've estimated the cost and divided it between the two utilities evenly. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. The next in the water portfolio is the category that we call Water Main Extensions or Adjustments. This is kind of.
If you guys want to follow, I apologize Dale. We are now into the water categories. If you guys flip to your water sections into the, sorry about that Dale. Just want to make sure that they can follow you. Under the water tab within the green section, then budget request, this is where you'll be able to follow Dale detail by detail. Sorry about that Dale.
Shoot, I was trying to confuse them.
Look under parks.
You're thumbing through parks looking for where this is at. I know you are.
I know right where you're at Dale.
Okay. Thanks Liz.
Sure thing.
All right, so we, all on the same page?
Yes.
All right, great. So Water Main Extensions and Adjustments, this category, you know, historically was titled for those times where the city truly just extended our service out. Now it largely encompasses not only projects occasionally that come through for those extensions, but any of the efforts that we need to make as it's associated with road and other utility type projects. So ITD, ACHD type efforts where we have to go in and we have to make the adjustments to our systems to accommodate the modified roadways and those kinds of things. And in this case, there are three ACHD projects that are being planned for next year that require funding for those utility adjustments. And they are listed as Eagle Road, Amity to Lake Hazel, Amity to Victory, and Ten Mile in Amity intersection. So this is an aggregate pool of funding that we traditionally project forward at a historical rate. It's actually up a little bit this year because of those specific projects. We work closely through our transportation and utility coordinator to understand what's going to be necessary from us as a water or wastewater utility doing work in the right-of-way that the Highway District controls. And these reflect our best estimates based on what is known about these projects today. So.
Dale, so I think one thing that's maybe helpful for other people that maybe half council already is aware, but at least for me as a new council member was understanding that alternative methods of putting our infrastructure in do not save money like we'd have to buy the right-of-way. And there's a lot of synergy with putting these things in the same place that ACHD and ITD are doing things. The challenge is that they completely control it and we're required to adjust it based on what they do. So.
Well said.
Appreciate the coordination to try to plan as much as possible.
The other thing, on both extensions and on replacements, to the extent that we can coordinate with a road or a highway project, it saves the city from having to do a large portion or the majority of surface restoration. And that is extremely expensive when you go and tear up the road and have to bring it back to its original state. So there is a measure, significant measure of coordination with those utilities to make sure that we're in sync with them.
Dale, real quick, just another process question. Cause I looked in the base budget, water construction projects and 3490 code, you know, it's those ongoing operating 18,000. Is this pretty much kind of a, there are going to be amendments coming along because of, you're dealing with third parties, other government entities that may all of a sudden change or add to depending on their budget situation. So it seems like to me, and my recollection is, of course, last time I served, there was a recession going on, so it wasn't a lot of activity. So can you guide me a little bit on what we can expect down the road? There will be more budget amendments, things will change or, I mean, this is a known item coming up for this fiscal year, but.
It is. And I tell you, as we get, as we get better in planning and coordination, we put in the best information that we can into our 10-year CFP. But you're right Brad, there is, there is an ongoing expectation that every year we'll have some level of activity that is in this account as well as in replacements that we need. And we are right now in a bit of a higher level of roadwork. And so you're seeing it both here and on the sewer side, that we have a significant number of efforts. That's good on the transportation front, but it forces us to, you know, to respond and put the money in and make it available to do what's necessary to keep our infrastructure intact and servicing the areas. Now, if you look at the CFP, I believe after next year, this, this particular account line comes back down and it's estimated at roughly 300 to 350,000 dollars. I guess time will tell. If our, if our city or county's appetite for road projects continue at the level it is, we'll be looking carefully and may have to adjust that number up. But it is a annual item that we try to look at and we try to project what our needs are. And if we don't know, we will plug in a historical level of spending to, to make sure that it gets into the modeling, it gets into our rate structures, those kinds of things. And we're not surprised by it at the time.
So we just have to be prepared as well not to be surprised.
You do, yeah. And, you know, in some cases we get surprised. And we had an experience like that earlier in the year where you approved an amendment, particularly as it related to the Linder Road, excuse me, Ten Mile Road projects where the ultimate design and plans had a much greater significant impact on our infrastructure than what we were originally told and what we experienced. So we had to add incremental money to satisfy that one. Thanks.
Dale, if I could add, Brad to assist Dale and his team with these, as you call surprises or projects. We do have a fund balance policy and we work with Dale and his team to make sure that we have appropriate funds available for these ad hoc projects or surprise projects so that we can react in a positive manner for the, for the community. So we work with them to make sure he has funds on an annual basis that he can go to you guys, go, hey, we have funds available, can we react? And hopefully the answer is always yes on a timely basis to meet what Liz was talking about. Let's use synergy and work with the proper agency.
That's great. Thanks. Okay. The next project before you is in our, in our water department. We currently use a drive-around mobile meter reading system that generates the usage that automatically uploads to the city's water billing systems. That unit is approaching an age where we're starting to see some issues. Last year I think we had, or in the last year, we've had five mechanical breakdowns of that unit. And it creates tremendous stress in the organization to try to get things repaired, try to get out, get the reads done. And we feel it's prudent that we request a second unit as a redundant unit anticipating that the current unit's going to fail. We have no backup. And so in order to keep our billing systems intact with a mobile reading unit, the request here is for an additional unit that we will use and take our aging unit off-site and use that as a backup for a number of years. In total, we are probably in that eight to nine years away from a fixed base reading system. And we'll be back to talk to you more about that as we enter winter this coming year. We have a current contract relationship with our, with our meter reading company that has them paying for and allowing us to learn a little bit more about fixed base reading systems. But we're currently on a, on a slow conversion process to get to where ultimately we'll have a fixed base reading, but we're still going to need, you know, this unit to be bridging that gap. And if we're lucky, maybe this, this will carry us through that, the balance of that timeframe.
Dale, is it your intention then to run?
We'll get through this, sorry.
Dale, is it your intention then to run two mobile readers? And this is, this is more than, it just sounds like more than just replacing one that could potentially go bad. It's utilizing both, assuming that the current one you have continues to function.
Our intention is to have a second unit, which is, offers us the redundancy in the event that we have continuing failures with the current unit as it continues to age. So we are not going to run another reading unit, if you will, or employee going around. But this just gives us the redundancy in order to make sure that we can reliably get the reads when we need them. This is an activity that takes several days every two weeks for each billing cycle. And we just don't have backup capability to get it done and. Thanks. So the next budget is well 17, budget request of well 17 water treatment. This is a project that we brought to you requesting an amendment in FY '20 to get initiated. This came as a result of us getting very high readings for manganese and in particular on well 17. It required us to take this well offline and move quicker than what we anticipated in getting iron and manganese treatment on it. So this is listed as year two of two because earlier this year it was approved to move forward with the, with the first step. This offers a treatment facility, improving water quality and as mentioned, allows us to operate wells without the concern or issue of having a regulatory non-compliance as it relates to, you know, these constituents of concern. In the first year, on a typical treatment facility, we do all of the analysis of the water and we design and order the processing vessel that's required. It's a substantial piece of equipment. And in the second year, we then install and construct the actual facility that contains the treatment and comes online. So you or council head approved 900,000 for that design and equipment order. This request for the 1.1 million completes that and will bring this on at the conclusion of FY '21. Just a couple of facts, I guess, about well treatment in general. We currently have five treatment facilities that are online. And over the course of the next several years in the, in the five-year CFP, we are looking at six additional well treatment facilities coming online, which includes this and five others that are, that are being scheduled. And that will bring us to a, the bulk of our horsepower wells having treatment capability to take care of the constituents that are of concern in those wells. This is the leading contributor to discolored water that we have in the city. So with high mineral contact content and the addition of residual chlorine creates chemical reaction, causes a precipitate. And that precipitate shows itself as a water discoloration issue throughout the city. So this is a big commitment that we've started four or five years ago to try to get the bulk of the city's supply wells converted with treatment.
Dale, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So to understand correctly, this was, there was a plan or it was already in the CFP to do construction of this well, but you're advancing that because of some condition issues that were found?
That's correct.
With the well itself and the water?
Yes.
That was being, okay.
We are obligated by regulation to do sampling under the UCMR program dictated by EPA. And the results of that program result, determined that this particular well, which we had had scheduled for treatment, was dangerously close to a level that would have required us to make significant notification to all citizens and those kinds of things. And so it was prudent for the city to move this up, accelerate it, get it started and get that particular issue taken care of. The balance of the wells that are on this site are not quite as, as critical, but certainly are important and are scattered across all five zones in our water systems, or, you know, supply system that we have, so. The next project, well 18, was originally planned and this particular request is for year two. Very similarly, we had $800,000 in FY '20 to do equipment design and procurement. And the balance of this effort then allows us to complete that facility installation and construction, slightly higher than the other. Prices do vary between site to site based on its capability, its output, the chemistry of the water that's required, the level of treatment that's required. So this one in, in total is about 2.2 million dollars to, over two years to complete the treatment facility. But it's a, it's a large, high-output well that's supporting our Zone Three supply, which is one of our two largest zones in the city. So same, same kind of effort there. Any questions? Okay. Well 25, liner upgrades. So, thank you. Kyle, Kyle's probably the one that, that can speak in the greatest detail on this. But we have had, on some of our older wells, we've had challenges with chemistry changing over time. One of the solutions is to go down into that well and put a liner in, which allows you to more select the particular aquifer that you're drawing from. In 2014, this particular well had a temporary sleeve put in to select to a particular aquifer that worked very successfully. It was about a $30,000 investment. It was a black iron sleeve that fit down in there. And that sleeve is now deteriorating. So this particular project is requesting $200,000 to remove the temporary pilot fix for that and replace it with a stainless steel sleeve that'll allow that well to serve for, for many generations to come. This is also a Zone Three particular project. And so we're just trying to now put in a more permanent solution that'll serve the city for many years to come. So, questions?
Hey Dale?
Sir.
So going forward, would it make more sense to do a permanent fix so that we can save money and eliminate the temporary fixes?
I believe that you would find that the well construction techniques today resolve a lot of this. PVC columns, a lot of the infrastructure that goes down is now today is our stainless steel. So on new wells we have, I think we have better opportunity for that. But if and when we get in and if we can't, if we can't solve it through our test well and we have to go to this method, I'm not so sure that this still isn't a viable option for the minimal amount of money to at least prove that we can take care of it with a, with a lower cost thing. But I'm sure that that's very, very possible.
That was my one question to you, by the way.
It was. Okay. That's it? All right. So.
He's got force. You have a high score.
And you really took it to heart. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So good effort. You know, it, it sometimes, you know, this, this stuff with wells, as I'm learning, is just, you can rely on science as much as you can, but there are just things that are happening out, you know, in the aquifer and different things that we can't predict. And so we get zingers and we just have to kind of work through them in the best manner as possible. And in this case, very similar. And in this case, very similar to 20B, we had the exact same situation. It worked well. We saw that same deterioration, so it's been resolved here a year or two ago, but yeah, it's, in this case was a good, good strategy to put in and try to salvage the aquifer and the well supply, so. Questions? Okay. Next one is well nine replacement. So this is a year two of a three-year project. Typically, when we build or replace wells, it's, it's kind of a three-part series. One is building a test well and confirming what aquifer we want to tap for that. That's usually in year one. The construction of the actual production well falls in year two, and in year three, it's followed by the completion of the full pumping facility and bringing that on, online. Well nine is, is over here off of Franklin, between here and Lynder Road. It's back in a little area. The city purchased some additional property to give a better well lot size. This thing is not much more than a tough shed stuck over, stuck over a well, so it's, although it's served us well, it's, it's not a very safe and certainly not a long-term facility for us. So the overall intent here was to procure some land and expand the site. We did that a few years ago. We're now concluding the test well this year. And this, and in this particular case, it'll build the production well. And this is a 1977 well, so it's served the city for a number of years. And it's located in a good location, and we want to continue to, to utilize the site. So with that, it's a, it's about a 1.95 million, three-year project to completely build a new well on this well nine site. Questions? PRV SCADA. So as the, as you're aware, we have multiple pressure zones within the city, and along those pressure zone breaks, we utilize a, a piece of equipment or infrastructure called a pressure-reducing valve. And these go in along that boundary. They serve a purpose of regulating pressure from one zone to the other. We can also transfer water from one zone to the other as, as called for or needed. And in this case, these particular PRVs were constructed at a point in time where they were, there was no electricity and things available to the site. With growth and other things, we now have it. We would like to bring those into our overall SCADA system so that we can manage and monitor those pressure-reducing valves from our central command system that we have, offering real-time pressure zone monitoring and ultimately control by the water department. So this will take care of pressure, or PRV 2935. There are some others that will be coming down the road, and we'll just budget for those and kind of step our way through and get those, get those brought online so that we have access, access to control the way that we'd ultimately like to have.
Dale, any reason why we wouldn't get those done now? Why wait?
Other than the budgetary thing, I guess I would ask Warren if there's any specific reason whether those other sites, maybe, it may be the other sites do not have electrical power yet.
This is on. Okay. And I don't know that I have a tremendous answer for you, but some of them are still not got power associated to them. So as power, we can, we can see power getting closer. There's developments that are occurring around them. We know that those developments are going to, you know, build out in the next few years, and so we'll bring them on. And so we have a few of them that are that way. We also have a few of these that have, you know, to kind of go along with this. There's a few that we've put in that we're going to remove as we have developed the pressure zones. Some of them will be removed. But the bottom line is, we're, it's just opportunistic as growth comes in around those and allows us the opportunity to bring power in economically. We'll go ahead and take care of them. That and budget.
So one, I think this is a good question example on our process, Mr. Mayor, is there will be questions that might come up in today's discussion which don't maybe necessitate an answer right now. We're not trying to catch anyone cold, but there will be questions where the director may say, I can get that, let me take a look, and then share that with us over the coming week or two in preparation for June 30. So I didn't mean, not trying to catch a cold there, but yeah. If there's questions that we ask that cause any director to say, let me chew on that, let's get back to you, totally acceptable answer, because some questions might take time to get involved.
Okay.
Thanks.
So let me chew on that and we'll be back to you. So here's, so here's the flip side. So as, as we over time build our water system out and the robustness of it, and you see changes in pressure and zone boundaries and those kinds of things, we actually have some PRVs that are no longer needed. And, and in fact, they kind of present a risk. They're there, they're operating, they're not needed, they require maintenance, those kinds of things. And so this next budget request is for $30,000 to actually remove and take offline three that have outlived their utility to the system. And what we will do is, to the extent we can, we'll try to salvage some of the guts out of them, but basically we go in, remove the piping, bury them, and nobody will know they were, they were ever there, I guess, in the future. And so we actually have three of those that we are requesting funds to go ahead and abandon them, and that, that does, that does happen periodically where we, where things have changed to where they're no longer necessary, so.
Dale, there's no secondary market where we could sell them?
Not really. You know, like anything, you know, the technology and some of those things are changing so fast, but we will, we will take the guts out of them, we'll utilize them ourselves for any maintenance, repair needs. Sometimes they can be reused. Our arrangement on getting new ones built are that the developer will build the vault and bring in the necessary power and things if available. And the city actually specs and constructs out of our extension fund balance, the, the actual PRVs so that we make sure that they're done, they're done correctly, they're done with the equipment that's necessary, and that we put in the SCADA and the logic that's, that we would desire, presuming the power is available, so.
Dale, on this, either in the now or in the future, depending on time, I'd like a little bit better understanding about how many more of these that we have out there that could potentially be abandoned in the future, and how you as a department determine if it's no longer useful. Clearly, you make a decision based on kind of where we think pressure's needed, where growth's going to be. It comes faster, it comes slower, you make your determination. Having a good understanding about how you derive that, how you come to that conclusion, and how many more of these could be out there just for future years, I think would be beneficial.
Okay. And we can, and we can get to that. A lot of this stuff is master planned. Unfortunately, growth doesn't necessarily occur exactly the way you think. And then, you know, secondly, it depends upon the opportunity and how robust the water system kind of builds around this particular area that may render it no longer needed in that case. But I'd be happy to get you the information and our best estimate of what we see coming down the road.
Our friends in the West might want to buy our old stuff, you never know.
It's always for sale. Okay. The next water is, and I guess our final budget request for water, is that we have another relatively old well, well 11. It's located down Land Ark, so if you were to go past to the east of the park's maintenance facility and go down towards the end of Land Ark, we have a well, we call it well 11. It's on a very small parcel of land. It requires an easement with the school district property in order for us to meet the necessary setbacks for DEQ for where wells can be located to other facilities. It was built in, I believe, 1979. It's on our list for a well replacement starting in 2025. The problem is, is that we cannot rebuild that well in its current location. And this particular request is to secure some funding to buy a piece of property. We've identified some potential candidates that are in the area. The well is, in the general location, is, is located where we need it, and this request is for approval to pursue that. We need approximately one acre for, you know, a modern well site, and that would allow us the opportunity to not only build the well, but also add, if necessary, a treatment facility in time. So as I mentioned, this well is scheduled to start the replacement process in 2025, so development pressure and other things are consuming property, and so we feel like we've got to make an opportunistic move to try to secure a well site in that area. This is all commercial basically in here, so it's not like we're tapping a, a development to say, hey, you know, would you donate a lot for us to do this kind of thing? So good project, we're trying to plan ahead, and this would give us the opportunity to go and try to seek a piece of property in the area for, for a new well down the road, so.
As we move into the next one, to try to, I'm gonna give us all a five-minute break, just so you're looking at this and you can anticipate, so real quick, take whatever you need to do, restroom, et cetera, back on to.
Dale. Ready break.
You're done.
One.
You bank lasters.
Two ass way more luster.
We're gonna move into wastewater, that used.
I was talking to Laurel last. She set a door busted out along the poop, got everything set up in Napa, and a friggin' crack started going on a new facility?
Not crap.
Okay.
How is that possible? I have no idea. I, I'm on a director's call every week, and it was canceled last week and the week before.
Wonder why?
The week before, they have a record, wasn't talking conversations. Dying to find out.
There are dumpster fire out there when it comes to the public works. I mean, absolute dumpster fire.
There's a lot of this.
And not only that, they, they have a ton of debt, which like, which like capitalizes on a dumpster fire. So one of, one of my developers told me to build a house in Canyon County right now, and that even includes pulp, as well. Right off the bat, $17,000 in loans because of taxes. $17,000 right off. And this was requested, horrible. Seventeen grand. It's crazy.
I won't.
It's pretty good.
I was looking at those socks from my aunt's, and I thought, oh, what is these thing socks? And then when Robert said something about paper, I was, oh, Superman, yeah, it's a little bit of a sign over there.
Yeah, a little bit, a little blue. Extra budget minutes.
And they still have to, they still have to drop it. I don't think they need to. How many, how many shipments are they making? They don't, I like.
Well, shipments are being paid.
All right. We got Dean?
In conclusion.
On behalf of the council.
There's one.
Huh? It's a good example where, if you didn't ask a little question about these things, it really helps. That's our fault, not yours.
No.
So Dale, as soon as we get a, go ahead and start. We got four people in the room. Let's go. Okay, I got the high sign.
Are you still there?
So. You don't get rid of me that fast, Brad.
Not prolonged.
You guys might need to move over to, we'll be on the wastewater tab.
Yes.
To the next set of enhancements.
So, we'll, uh, we'll start rolling through the wastewater budget requests. Uh, the first one, which was the companion to the arc flash on the water side. Uh, I would imagine there's probably no questions, so I'll flip over. Don't see any eyes rolling or anything, so. Uh, second one for the wastewater plant is following the, uh, the successful conclusion of our most recent capacity expansion project. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not very good at multitasking here. Um, we need to get started on the next, the next step. So, um, we, at our wastewater treatment plant, we have a series of projects that all kind of make up the capacity and capability of that facility, allowing us to meet our growth needs and our ultimate requirements that were issued in our 2017 permit. We have a 10-year runway to get those things done, and this is one of the next particular projects in it. Uh, this really is now addressing the processing horsepower. It goes in and upgrades the facility that we are currently abandoning with the new treatment process, converts that process to the, uh, to the new. Um, and interestingly, I, uh, this retrofit and upgrade to the existing plant saved the city nineteen million dollars as opposed to constructing from new and getting the same kind of capacity and horsepower. So, uh, great project, next step. Uh, not sure it ever ends, but, um, I'll stand for any questions if you have any on this particular project.
Dale, I have a couple of questions. Um, what year are we in, in the 10-year requirement? This, this is a, uh, a federal requirement for these upgrades, right?
That's correct.
What year are we in? And are there, is there federal funding to complete some of this? Or is that all responsibility of the city?
I'll take those one at a time. So, we, our new permit went into place in August of 2017. So, we are concluding the third year of our permit, moving into our fourth. We will get a new permit in 2025, 2022, I'm sorry. So, every five years. So, we're anticipating a new permit in 2022 and a new permit in 2027. However, our 2017 permit gave us a 10-year compliance schedule to implement everything that's required in that 2017 permit. So, um, and then to answer your question is, uh, the financial situation of the city of Meridian likely will not enable us to secure any kind of federal funding, which largely goes to communities who truly can't afford the required upgrades that are necessary.
There's a qualification requirement?
Yes, there is. Uh, to date, if you look at all the projects, we're about eighty-one million dollars into a hundred and fifty million dollar portfolio of projects to meet growth and regulatory compliance associated with that 2017 permit requirement. And stay tuned for what we get in 2022.
Dale, real quick on this, I was just curious if I could get a high-level response. You know, this year, request is for two and a half million, next year it'll be five million, and then 2023, it shows over eleven million dollars for this project. Is that construction? I mean, what makes the third year so much higher?
Yes, that is. That's the bulk of your construction. So, likely, on how this lays out for three years, is that next year will be spent on project design. Uh, second year, you'll have some construction and some procurement. And the third year is the heavy construction.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. The next initiative that we're requesting funding for is the Side Stream Phosphorus Recovery Project. This is also a compliance effort. This removes phosphorus, which is a critical nutrient that is part of our MPDS permit compliance requirements. Uh, this is the second year. This year, we have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you've approved that are going towards the design of that system, and that's going quite well. And year two here will give us, um, the actual construction of the necessary equipment to do that. Uh, of interest here, uh, this will remove phosphorus and actually dispose of that with our landfill solids. Down the road, we are reserving, um, the right and are constructing what we have today that would potentially allow us to actually harvest that material and could potentially be used as a, uh, a commercial fertilizer-type product down the road. But that is, that in itself, although being planned for, is not included in this dollar amount. It just does not make economic sense to install that, part of that particular equipment today.
Okay?
So Dale, hey on that one. So, I think, like, kind of our discussion may be good for the rest of council to sort of get, get a summary of two. So, this is modular in the sense that the construction that you're going with to meet the regulatory requirements will be able to harvest the phosphorus to potentially sell it later. So, nothing about how we're approaching this would stop us from doing that in the future as a project.
Correct. Otherwise, other than the fact that it will require more extensive machinery to actually extract it to the point where you have a salable product, which is like a fertilizer pellet that you might find in your retail products today.
And at what point would this project be completed to where it's an appropriate time for us to check in, you know, on that next stage?
I think we'll continually check that because at some point in time, if the fertile, if, if either the disposal of our landfill product gets excessively expensive or the retail or commercial value of that phosphorus material increases.
Right.
Uh, you'll, you'll likely. Project is, is, uh, I went the wrong ways. The next project is to secure some funding to assist as we prepare for our 2022 MPDS permit. Uh, leading up to 2017, the city leveraged, uh, significantly outside resources to assist in all of the necessary steps in preparation with permit. Uh, in fact, spent over five hundred thousand dollars in doing so. Um, we have a very experienced and talented staff today, many of which went through that process. Uh, but there are a number of things that we do need help on. So, this is a two-year request, seventy-five thousand dollars in '21, seventy-five thousand dollars in the early part of '22, uh, seeking outside assistance for stream modeling, reasonable potential analysis, permit compliance planning. Uh, so significantly reduced from past efforts, but we do think we need some outside resource to assist us in putting together everything and negotiating the best, uh, permit in 2022 for the city of Meridian. The next project, uh, is the continuation of our digester construction. So, a lot of the effort that you've seen us and have heard here to talk about has largely been associated around the liquid stream processing. Uh, and in '20, you approved, um, the initial effort to design our new digester. We have two today of this same nature. We need a third. It's largely capacity-driven project. This is year two that would allow us to continue that actual initiation of equipment procurement and construction. It does carry on for, for the third year. It has a total project cost of about eleven million dollars and positions us for digester, or, excuse me, for solid processing for in excess of 10 years at the current growth rates that we're seeing. Likewise, uh, the next project is for the DAFT retrofit. It's the dissolved air flotation thickener. Before solids materials are sent to the digester, we try to, um, remove as much liquid as we can. That's done through the DAFT. We have two of those today. We can expand the capacity of those. Um, and we're doing the first part of that project this year in '20. This is year two of that effort, um, for a million dollars. We are looking at the avoidance or elimination of adding a third digester, which is a three million dollar project. And we're anticipating that this also will delay that further investment for approximately 10 years of a, of a third unit. So, again, rebuilding and retrofitting, uh, a, a good financial decision for the city now. Next project is for a, um, a particular pump in the facility, uh, the internal mixed liquor recycle pump. Uh, and just, uh, just, just so you can really bone up on your, um, nitrification cycle, Laurel Lyte added this nice chart down here. Actually, the pump that's shown is what we're actually procuring, but it does play a very significant role in recycling and reusing and, uh, and moving product within the aeration basins where it's needed. Um, and we've identified a, um, a bit of a risk in that we do not have a spare of these procured. And, uh, we're eventually, uh, in this permit cycle, getting to the point where not having that capability to, uh, to fix something very quickly actually could lead to, you know, considerations of, uh, permit performance and non-conformance. So, um, we look at across the facility and look for these kinds of opportunities where we feel like we have high risk. Um, and, uh, and this is certainly what's been identified this year for fifty thousand dollars, so. Struvite. Periodically, we need to remove struvite. It's a, it's a chemical crystalline compound that builds up in our pipes and, and things. Uh, it's a result of the perfect combination of, uh, of environment and pH and chemical constituents that are in the system. And it is as hard as concrete, and it blinds off various vessel pumping and pipes and those kinds of things. Uh, we have found a chemical treatment that we can put into the system, circulate, and it breaks it back down. And, uh, we're doing that, um, on roughly a every-two-year cycle. And, uh, it's time to do that again. Uh, and so, our request here is for fifty thousand dollars to do and, and remove that. Um, and by doing so on a regular basis, we are, um, avoiding significant maintenance downtime and, and other costs by, by being able to chemically treat and remove struvite buildup in our facility.
Good question, maybe for Todd. This is something that we, we need to do clearly to keep our infrastructure in place. It's a regular occurring request. It sounds like it's going to be happening regularly. At what point does this just get added into the base budget and it's no longer an enhancement? Or Brad, sorry.
That's fair question, Liz. We can, we always work with the directors and departments to see if we want to add it to the long-term replacement schedule. If this is something we want to add, kind of like, um, infrastructure utility replacements, you'll see in the enterprise one, we can add this going forward. We'll just have to put some notes in the book to add it for fifty thousand this year, then zero for next year, then fifty thousand extra. Again, it's something that the director can ask us this with, and we can do that, um, going forward. We'll just work with them going forward on that.
It hasn't been an every-year event. Uh, in fact, last time is when we found, um, and researched and found the chemical that was available to be using it. So, this is kind of our second cycle in doing that. Projects like Side Stream Phosphorus will help reduce this. And so, we're hoping that when that project comes online, the need for this will reduce. It won't go away, but it will reduce. Um, and, uh, it's, it's just not an every-year event right now. Now, we keep track of it in our CFP. So, when you look at that, you'll find these kind of periodic operational expenses are included there, so we don't lose sight of them. They're included in all of our rate modeling efforts, those kinds of things. They're just not, uh, they're just not being built into the base yet. So, the next couple of, um, requests are associated with FTE. Um, and these are, these are kind of concluding efforts that we started three to four years ago as we knew we were growing and building and expanding our wastewater treatment facility and have been slowly adding both operations and mechanical support. Uh, and the first position that we're requesting is for an operations supervisor. Uh, the little pictograph does kind of depict where we're at. Um, with two supervisors, we do not have the capability to cover the facility 24/7, seven, you know, three sixty-five a year. Uh, this request is for a frontline supervisor that will be largely focused on coverage for nights and weekends and, and give us the oversight. You know, as that operation becomes more and more complex, um, you know, our, our recovery time on any kind of an issue is, um, is declining rapidly, and, and we're, we're going to need the, the oversight. Um, this has been planned. It's been planned for a number of years when we put together the staffing strategy for the facility. Uh, so, this is a request for that supervisory position. Um, I'll go ahead and I'll talk about the next one, although, um, they're not directly related. The next one is, is also to help support that 24/7 operation. Um, this request is for a lead mechanic. Uh, so, it's not a full supervisory role, but it's a higher-level mechanical skill and a position that can also offer lead responsibilities for particularly the weekend work, now that we have seven-day-week maintenance coverage for the, for the expanded facility. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions as it relates to labor. Um, again, these have been both, uh, planned for and part of our plan for a number of years. Um, and completes, completes the effort to get the coverage we need for seven-day, 24/7 operation. You will see additional positions in the CFP coming, and that'll largely be a result of the facility just nearly doubling in size as we retrofit and bring the full operation on. Uh, that is just, uh, we're covering, uh, we're covering a lot of area and, and the technology is becoming very complex, so.
Dale, um, you'll be off the hook on this one. Question for finance. Um, just, uh, again, process. When you look at total budget request for personnel lifetime, each fiscal year, it is the same amount, even though we know it gets adjusted usually up depending on CIP, different variables. But does it look like there's any adjustment or guesstimate as to, uh, what's?
Fair question, Brad.
Why?
So, the database that we use to maintain these particular documents are at cost today. We don't do inflationary adjustments in the database itself or eliminate the confusing factors to ask all of our directors to figure out what inflation rate to use, what growth rate. So, we ask them to manage at a cost. When we do our forecasting, within our forecasting model, we then apply appropriate inflationary rates to that forecast. So, you see costs, because we just wanted to pick what the cost is, then at a later date, we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay, great. Thanks. See? That was a good one, huh?
Good one. Thanks, Todd. The, uh, the next request is for year one of a two-year project to complete the undergrounding of the wastewater, uh, power line. the undergrounding of the wastewater power line system. With a variety of projects that we've had in the last few years, we've been successful in undergrounding about 60% of the wastewater power distribution system. And that carries with it a significant reduction in risk of power loss. We have had a handful of power outages over the course of the last few years. Every one of them have been associated with the overhead line system. Bird strikes, weather, people banging into power poles or the tension guide wires and those kinds of things. And unfortunately, that loop system integrity is what allows us to get power distributed around, even backup power. And so we actually had a situation where we couldn't even distribute our backup power on the system. So something we've been talking about for a number of years, we've now concluded the components that we can with our recent expansion project. This is the first year of a two-year project to design, spend funds to design that, and ultimately, next year, seek funds to bring all of the power distribution to our wastewater facility and the loop that's created, put it all underground, and reduce that significant risk of disruption. We have about 40 minutes from the time our power goes out to the time that we have liquid flow happening in areas that we don't want it happening. And so it's very critical. Our backup generation system is excellent. But if it has no power line or no system to run on, it creates a significant risk. We have a high voltage contractor that is on contract and represents our emergency response, and they do a good job. But if they are ever faced with a case that cannot be immediately resolved, we're into a significant issue. And the few that we've been involved with are not, they're not fun. So this is, this is a project to really reduce that risk and have a very robust system with our backup power generation.
Dale?
Yes.
I have a question for you. So this is just on the wastewater facility site, correct?
That's correct.
So how does this, does this help or how does this help if power goes out at a different location? I mean, is that, is there, is there any infrastructure that's going to be put in that's going to help that or that's going to increase the capability or the, you know, time in which you have to start the generator? Are you going to have some additional time before you have to do that with the improvements that are made?
So this project is just for the wastewater treatment facility. All other critical infrastructure have directly connected backup-powered generation systems at them. Wells, pump stations, they all have their own backup generator systems. And it's not relying upon overhead infrastructure to actually connect to and run the system. So. Okay. Wastewater SCADA, a very, very critical part of our SCADA system is the alarming capabilities that we have. And we're requesting $30,000 to upgrade probably one of the most important parts of that, and that's our 911 call-out system. So anytime we get alarming systems, and there's thousands of them that are throughout the facilities, our, our knowledge of those events come first through many times this 911 SCADA system. And our current system is cumbersome. We've had some challenges. It requires significant intervention with our SCADA administration staff. And we have an opportunity to upgrade that for $30,000 and feel it's a very important project for us to do. So this is a software upgrade effort for alarm calls. Sewer line extensions and adjustments, just like on the water side. This actually has one significant effort that is going to be upgrading the five-mile trunk sewer and relieving a backup or overload area. That's about, that's about 60, 70% of this project. The other is two ACHD projects that are kind of sister efforts of the ones we talked about on the water side. This one also has a tendency to go up and down depending upon what's necessary. But these are, these are three, three particular projects that make up that portfolio of money. The last wastewater project that we have identified here is a continuing effort to secure property around the wastewater treatment facility. So we very much appreciate your support for our most recent effort to secure some of the land. I'm pleased to say that we're 99% of our way through that process. Closing would be not later than July 6th on that property. And in fact, my discussion with legal today suggested that we're going to probably be targeting June 25th to complete that, that acquisition. So thank you for doing that. I think we have some great strategies on how we want to utilize that. There is another piece of property in the photo that we feel makes a very significant strategic acquisition. And this request is for the funds that if we can and if we are successful in negotiating for that, we think it's in the city's best long-term interest to go ahead and procure that piece of property as well, thus giving the city complete control of the contiguous property that abuts the facility and offers the opportunity for growth for, for that buffer spacing, et cetera. So I will, if you can see in that drawing, I should have pointed out back before, with, with the current and planned expansion projects, you know, the property that we own is, is quickly filling with process equipment and capability. And really, what we're trying to do here is make long-term efforts on behalf of the city so that this one single site will serve the city for really decades out in front of us by having enough property to, to expand. So.
Dale, I have a question about the amount. Is that based on a preliminary conversation with the owner? How did that figure come to be?
So that, that price came to be based on the prices paid recently for all the properties around there, including the property that we recently acquired on a per-acre price that is actually lower than what we just recently paid. And so it's, it's based on our best estimate today of what it would cost to secure that particular piece of property.
Thank you, Dale. Counsel, any final questions before we move on to the next group?
I'll be back to talk to Streetlights.
Thanks. Cameron.
So this next one that you'll find in the community development is actually located in the economic development tab. You want to open up that. It's the, the only green slide in that section.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good to be with you. We have one request before you. This is for our Economic Development Administrative Assistant. This is a position that many of you will recall from last year was a, was a topic of discussion and appreciated the support then and certainly appreciate, would appreciate the support now. This is one that I think, given the times, becomes more and more critical in not only the, just the overall health of our economy and our community, but also just a service that we need to take to the next level. We see this position as being a great support for a rock star hire in Tori Cleary. She's done a fantastic job for us as the Economic Development Administrator. And this will enable her to elevate her focus to more of those critical retention and attraction efforts. So with that, this, this position is before you, and we appreciate your support.
I got a few questions. Help me understand the exact need that this position is meant to fill and why you feel it is an administrative position? Kind of what I want to push on a little bit is, do you really need an administrative assistant? Or do you need something else? Maybe you want to wait another year? There is real budget constraint, I don't know. But talk about it. But are you really getting what you really need? And understand the, the exact skill that is needed to fill the need?
Counsel, I appreciate that question. I think this is in an effort to, you know, like I mentioned, really elevate our efforts from just kind of, more or less, just kind of trying to put out fires and address every need that comes in because they're actually quite numerous and great you know, right now, as you can imagine. This would aid us in actually building out an economic development program and getting it through that next phase. I think it is safe to say that we have definite, you know, grand revisions of what we could do with additional investment in our economic development efforts. But I, we felt like, you know, in consultation, you know, as an internal team, as well as, you know, the administration, that this was a good, this was a good way to approach the times and address the wolves as a sled, if you will. So I don't know if that's a direct response, but I, I think we have, we have needs there. We could do a lot with more investment. But we're grateful for what we can get, and we feel this would be a good, good way to go this year.
So I guess I, is the amount of work being done in economic development different because of COVID-19? And are, are, do we have someone who has higher-order skills spending an unusual amount of time fielding questions that we think that's associated with the pandemic? Or like, is this really an ongoing, like? Because I, and the only reason I'm pushing a little bit is I see administrative assistants to me as a little bit of a red flag at times because I sort of see that as, you know, this is, you know, someone who's maybe taking calls, doing data entry. Is that really what you need? As like, I'm hesitant to fill a plug for something that you really need, maybe in two years, is another really highly skilled person doing economic development with an administrative role? Because I think there's a little bit of a trade-off. You know, if you get this headcount, and I don't want to speak for anybody else on council, but if you get this headcount today, you've gotten another position, and it's going to be harder to come back later. I want to make sure you're asking for what you really need. Doesn't mean that it would happen. And I'm not saying you're not, but just want to understand a little bit the, maybe Robert wants to jump in, but the question pool there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to jump in from my perspective because this was done under my, you know, what I was willing to support. Last year, this came up with this, with a half-different council where they tried to give Cameron this position. And at that point in time, the mayor said no. Economic development has traditionally been supported half the time through the mayor's office through administrative assistance from our office to do that work. Has it been fully utilized? Well, it depends upon the person who was asking the work to be done and who was there to do the work at the time. My conversations with Cameron have been, moving forward, we need to separate this out from the mayor's office. You need to have this need billed in and by your department. Because of where we are in the budget this year, I was not willing to support more of a higher level of service in the department. But I would be willing to support that need, which to whatever level has been supplied by our department, to be supplied in his department. Would he like more? I'm sure he would. So would our police department. So would every other department in the city. They would like more than what they have in this budget from a personnel standpoint. But I didn't feel appropriate to say no. Not only am I taking away that support, but I'm not going to support you in asking for it. But so that is where it lies from a practical standpoint. And to your point, yes. I mean, could this position be converted in two years to a greater need? It very well may from that standpoint. But this was a direction half of this council last year seemed to support in providing this position. So I said I would support this one. But I could have supported a similar type request from several of our departments.
Along the, oh.
Go ahead.
Along those lines, I had a lot of conversations with Cameron and Tori about the department and their vision for it. And yeah, and I think, I'm in agreement with Counselwoman Strater's line of thinking and questions. I mean, I'm a liaison for this department, so I'd love to see us approve that position this year and not wait till next year based on the conversations, many conversations I've had with them about the significant amount of need that's coming in, requests that are coming in. It's been difficult for Tori to meet those and to really do what I believe that position, her position and her department is meant to do, which is to go out and seek, seek, you know, understanding of what are the economic development needs are in our community to really be able to proactively do that. But instead, she's spending a lot of her time responding. And so there really is sort of two roles that need to be played in, in economic development, a response role and, and a proactive role. And one person just can't do that. And so I agree, and I'm just to be really honest, in my opinion, I'm going to advocate for that second role for this year, which we can talk about at our next hearing. But, but, and all of you are welcome to ask me specifics on the financial piece of that. But I appreciate Cameron saying, hey, we'll, we'll work with what we are able to get if council will, will support us. But I'm, I'm going to actively, I mean, Kuna has an economic development department, one FTE. Does Meridian only need one FTE? We're four times the size of that city. And there's other cities that are, that have full-time economic development employees. And so that's, that's my thought on that. But I just wanted to say that I'm, I understand the line of thinking that you're moving forward with.
Could I throw one, one quick question out there, which is if we think there's administrative need, but we're not sure how great it is, if it arises to the level of, unclear. Because someone was working on it half the time. Like, do we look at a temporary contractor to establish the true workflow and see if COVID-19 is contributing to a lot of the? Like, I'm just wondering, is there, is there like a baby step in here where you go for a full, but to really figure out like the true administrative part of the work as opposed to different, like, I don't want to be disparaging, not like higher-level work, but there's really a difference in my mind between like administrative work that we can get at a lower cost, perhaps even outsource it, or a contractor thing versus like a full-time position?
And conversely, you could go the opposite way.
Sure.
You know, you could, you could contract out. We often had, we had economic development contracted out for the city for many years. You could contract with somebody else for that higher-level need if that need exists. Because it goes both ways. I would love to see the justification for a full second-time position as to what that would look like. I, I can't say that I, I would support, you know, doubling our economic development efforts based on what I see in the activity at this point in time. All I know is that they, they have a need for administrative support from that standpoint. But it is an ongoing conversation, but I leave to council's direction on what they think this should or should not be. Do you have a question, at least if you appear?
No, I think you answered it. It sounds like there's more bandwidth now to interact with stakeholders, whether it's face-to-face, through social media or any other means of communicating. face-to-face, through social media, or any other means of communicating. Kind of open enough Tori's ability to do more? Yeah, I think so.
Cameron?
Yeah?
Would you anticipate that the job duties of this role would be outside or in addition to what our normal job duties are for an administrative assistant position?
Yeah, so the way we, Councilman Cameron, the way we kind of put together the job description was, was actually pretty specific to economic development efforts. So it's, it's a lot of, you know, particularly to database management, you know, outreach, a lot of the, to Councilwoman Perro's point, it's more of your response types, type efforts, you know, cord, low-level coordination in that regard. The way that I, I kind of envision this is kind of, maybe it is that baby step to a, to a more built-out program where you can start to get into things like, you know, business liaison or project management type stuff. You have, you know, a big project coming in, you want to, you want to handhold that through our entire, you know, planning, building, you know, occupancy process. So there's, there's some of those processes that would require high-level, you know, building expertise, planning expertise. This isn't quite, certainly not that. It's maybe the baby steps.
Well, I realize that this, that we're just hearing the presentation today and not fleshing this out today. I do want to say that there, this has been a request for a project manager from multiple of our, multiple developers and multiple groups that have come forward, have asked that of the city. I don't have any idea what, what specifically need is not getting filled and we can have that conversation another day, but if that's something that you're interested in knowing more about, I would imagine Cameron would answer that.
I think for me, it's just, maybe we're getting wrapped up around the title of the thing that is before us. I mean, Dale brought forth engineers, mechanics. I trust that those are exactly the people that he needs to do the job for his department? No question. This is the position that you're bringing that you think you need for the department? Great. I think the difference is, you've got a council, you've got a city that's very invested in economic development, so we want to make sure we're putting forth the best resources. And what I heard from Councilwoman Strater was, I'm not opposed to this, and I don't want to put words in your mouth. It is, I want to make sure that if we're adding the full-time employee, that we're adding what is going to meet the demands of the market is bearing right now and the needs of yours and Tori's, Tori's department. And so I think that's just a clarification. I think if anybody, I've been supportive of this position for a long time, being in your department. I just want to make sure that what you're hoping to achieve is what's being brought before, before us.
That's very well said. I appreciate that.
I think positions evolve and change. And even with the title of administrative assistant, that varies from someone who answers the phones at the counter to, I believe, does Judy have an administrative assistant title? Various levels of work product at the administrative assistant level.
Fair.
So this is not viewed as a front counter, sit-at-the-desk position. It is more of a back office assistant position that can be various levels of expertise.
It sounds like you've got a job description flushed out that's going to meet the needs of the department, so I'm good.
And if the workload changes, we have a process through HR that allows for that title change and pay-to-be performance with the work that is being done by the person.
Okay, so we could kind of evolve with this as, as we really flesh out.
As they figure out what their true needs are.
Cameron, could this role be morphed into more high-level position if needed in the future?
You know, it's, I think in my mind, the answer is yes, although you, a lot of it will depend on who you hire, right? So if we're looking at a, you know, high-level building liaison, business liaison, you're looking for someone that has at least the capacity to gain, you know, planning expertise, building certification. Those are really what your, the ingredients you're going to need to be able to create that kind of true liaison position. So yeah, I think the answer is in who you hire. If we were just to get exactly what we need without that future view, then the answer would probably be no, it would have to be another person. But I think if we hire well, and we tend to do that in our department, we could, we could grow this. And that would be my goal, is to grow this position into truly what, what we need it to be in the department.
Any other questions? Cool. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
We're going to move off to the general fund next. The next one that we have is in our administration, starting off with streetlights. Yes, streetlights. Welcome back, Dale.
So this is a general fund project that is administered by Public Works through our streetlight and utility coordinator role. This particular effort is a request for $45,000 for new capital investment, streetlights. This is a project that's been going on for a number of years at differing levels of financial support, but is largely dedicated to install streetlights in areas that we would consider today are underserved and is largely focused towards walking to school routes, areas where there may be high crime, or just a need for better vehicular or pedestrian safety. So we've, we've identified the need for $45,000. Al is here and he, he legislates the, the program. He maintains a list. We probably have, you know, close to a million dollars' worth of areas identified in the city that are in priority, that we could be instituting and putting in streetlights. We have about 8,000 streetlights in the city that we're responsible for. Al gave me a fact that when this city builds out and if it, and if it complies to the city's streetlight standards, we will have 38,000 streetlights in our city. A lot of this effort is earmarked towards those areas before the city had streetlight standards or, you know, the older parts of town, those kinds of things. Unfortunately, this gets you somewhere between eight and 10 streetlights by the time you purchase the, the equipment and deliver electrical service to the location things. But money well spent and we do have some areas, some priorities that we've identified for this particular money and look for your approval to continue that effort to add streetlights to these underserved areas. And with that, I would stand for any questions or be happy to have Al step up and address any of those.
Dale, for either you or Al, what's our, I was saying, I guess, liability in terms of the converting the sodium lights to LEDs? I mean, if, if we had a magic wand, so let's change them all this year, what, do we, do we have a ballpark cost about what that looks like? I know we're kind of taking it a little bit by the apple every year. Just curious.
Yeah, that's a.
How big this apple really is.
So that, that's a little bit different conversation. So we do LED light conversions as part of our replacement program. So that falls into the replacement budget area. But I just so happen to have some ballpark figures for you, anticipating that this would come. So, so if, if, if we rest on approximately 8,000 lights that the city is responsible for, some component of it, we have about 1,400 lights that are in HOA and Idaho Power. Our responsibility is just for the electrical power, so we have no maintenance and those kinds of responsibilities. So that leaves about 6,600 lights balance. We currently have about 1,700 of those that are converted to LED. That leaves a balance of about 4,900 lights. Costs about $400 a light to convert. And with my liberty to round, it's about a $1.9 million investment for the city to take all streetlights that are currently high-pressure sodium and replace those to LED.
Hey, Dale.
Long answer, but.
So topped very close to my heart. So I believe, please confirm, at the current rate at which we're funding replacements, it will take, I believe we sat down and noodled out, it would take approximately 21 years for us to get all of the sodium lights replaced over to LED? Is that round accurate?
That, yeah, I think anywhere between 20 and 25 years to do that at the rate at which we're doing it, which this year, that request is at $75,000. To do that, that does 188 lights roughly. But if you looked at, at that same rate, it would take you over 20 years to make that conversion.
Dale, on your replacement form, it says that these sodium lights have a lifespan of five years?
Sodium lights have a lifespan of approximately five years. And at that, at that point in time, you need to have the bulb replaced.
So maybe, maybe there's a disconnect here.
Yeah, that's why, aren't they replaced when they go out?
Right. Why would it take 25 years for us to replace all the sodium lights if?
I'm saying from a conversion. It's, it's far less expensive to replace a bulb than to make a conversion to an LED fixture.
So again, forgive my ignorance, I, I unscrew an incandescent bulb in my house, plug in an LED, and I'm good to go. It's not that way.
Not that simple. That's correct.
I was hopeful.
It requires a complete fixture change, outer the head on the unit.
What, once these are all converted, what's the estimated savings in power? And is some of that, as, as, as you have a schedule for replacing these, if we start having power costs, are we going to be able to contribute more of our budget to replacements?
I don't know if we've added up the full cost of that, but I, I'll give you, so a 250-watt high-pressure sodium replaced with an equivalent illumination LED, you have approximately a five-year rate of return or payback. 100 watt is a little bit closer to seven years. So, and, and power is a big component of that, as well as a LED today has approximately a 20-year life in between your maintenance cycles and replacements as opposed to every five years. And so when you go out on a burned-out high-pressure sodium, your bulb is not the most expensive part of the car. It's the bucket truck and an electrician who has to go up and actually replace that. That's, that's a good part of the cost of that maintenance. When you factor those in, LED versus high-pressure sodium, you're, you're looking at that five-to-seven year return on investment to convert to LED. And that's been continuing to come down as technology and costs and things play into it.
Dale, if council wanted to move more aggressively on replacements, it sounds like we're handling that, managing that mostly through contractors as opposed to our staff. So if that was something the council wanted to become more aggressive on, would that result in a significant impact to Al's time with everything else he has going on?
All of that work is outsourced. The city does not have the equipment or the resources. It takes an electrician and those, and bucket trucks and those kinds of things to do that. I think it would, it would take more of Al's time to coordinate, but I can't tell you that it would overwhelm you. Would you care to address that?
It wouldn't be overwhelming. It would just be more on project management.
We're all getting yelled at by Dean today. Don't worry about it. Happens to the best of us.
Mr. Mayor, council, sorry about that. It would be some additional time just in project development and project management on that, just to make sure we prioritize enough areas where we have funds for.
Now, I mean to put you on the spot, I think, you know, lots of us have talked about our desire to accelerate this. And I guess, I kind of look to you as a subject matter expert. Are we, are we moving fast enough? Should we be more aggressive? Are we being too aggressive from your, your standpoint? I mean, what's, what's, do you, are there other recommendations or other scenarios for us to look at from your perspective?
Well, the good news is with LEDs having, you know, roughly a 20-year lifespan, I'll be retired by the time the LEDs need replaced. So, so that's, that's good. Some other cities have had some issues where they kind of put all their eggs in one basket and did a massive upgrade at one time. I would probably recommend not doing that just for fear of getting a bad batch of fixtures. So you could increase, you know, maybe instead of 20 years, go to 10 years. Five years is very aggressive, but that would, that would work. I wouldn't go less than that.
Okay. Thanks.
That's helpful. If it's at all possible to, because I guess that's a proposed enhancement that, that could be discussed by council. So could we, like, earmark that for the workshop where we set our priorities? Does that make sense? I've never.
You guys can give me all the money you want and spend down the fund balance. Just note, every dollar you spend has an impact towards something else, long-term.
Yeah, I'm assuming there would be some trade-offs that we would want to talk about. And perhaps, I mean, there could be milestones with enhancements, like if we end up, you know, collecting, collecting more on the sources side, perhaps the uses side adjusts and we have, maybe we double our spending on LED replacements. That would cut that down to 10 years. And then perhaps we could revisit throughout the year if we were, you know, to be ahead of our plan, so to speak.
So to address when you approach it, can we, this is the budget process, so you have every right to, it's not an enhancement in this case because Al and Dale had mentioned this is already a process that they already perform. It's now a funding level. So it would not be an enhancement, it'd just be, we would like to adjust the budget request or the replacement value of, I think it's what, like 75?
85,000.
So right now, it's in your book. You go, I would like to increase this to X value. You as the council get to say yea or nay to that value, but there is a balance then, like Robert said. If you increase it by X, we need to reduce something by X, so we always have that balance budget.
And I fully anticipated the council was going to put more money into this program. When you, when you had the budget amendment, I know that there wasn't, you didn't like the fact that I told them, go take the money out of future budgets. And I do that on purpose so that we force this dialogue at the right time, you know, because it is, there's a give and take and a decision is made. And just, this is for the supplemental projects, this is not just the conversion element. This is stuff where this stuff currently doesn't exist, which is another component. If you think this is too low, you could increase the funding to put in more lights in addition to the conversions.
I know little to nothing about this kind of technology, but is there a possibility that we will get however many years down the road and replace these light heads? And then we have a new technology now that is, you know, that we're looking at? I mean, where's that possibility?
You remember CFLs? CFLs were here for like, four years and you converted to LEDs. The LEDs are, I don't know that there's anything specifically that they're targeting beyond LEDs, but it could.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
This might be an item where it sounds like there's general consensus to enhance this process, this program. If between now and June 30, there might be a recommendation, knowing that the council has an appetite to, if possible, add funding to it, to send out a suggestion of what could be done. So we're not trying to create it on the fly here, but there clearly is a desire to try and do stuff, this program quicker. And leave that as one of the follow-ups.
As a matter of strategy, we try to identify the 250-watt high-pressure sodium as candidates for conversion because you get your biggest bang for the buck in terms of energy savings. It's not that clean when you go into an area though, because you'll find a mix. And though we can identify, a majority of them are 250, you've got some hundreds mixed in there, you've got other things in there. So it's, it's not fully clean, but we've got over 700 of the 250 high-pressure sodium lights that still exist in our inventory. And it'd be those geographic areas and projects that we would target to try to spend whatever money we allocate to get our biggest return on that investment.
So, so simple math from what Al was said is, $200,000 if you want to do it 10 years, or $400,000 if you want to do it five years? I mean, there, there's your, your. I mean, there's your allowance from what they said. So, you can determine what, if you have those, does that. I look at it more that that has a $2 million impact to your CFP over the next five to 10 years. So, that's where I'm looking at it more, some, not the one year. It's the cumulative impact.
All new lights are LED.
Yep.
So, we're not adding to the high-pressure sodium.
Any other questions? Thanks. Thank you. Our next item that we have is from Chris over here in our clerk. If you turn to the, I believe it's the clerk's tab, you will, you'll be able to find this specific budget request. Again, in the green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are hoping to replace the conference room tables in meeting rooms A and B. Currently, they are older wooden tables with very, very heavy legs, require two people to move. When we have to move them into here for a special meeting, they're very cumbersome. We require two or more people. We had roughly 50 meetings, 50 reservations in those rooms per month, the first six months of this fiscal year. It's obviously been delayed the last two months, but sometimes multiple meetings in a day. And it's up on the public, whoever's using that room, to move the furniture around. So, in order to make it a little more versatile, we want to replace them with tables like this. We're going to keep the chairs, which are very similar to the chairs we use in chambers, because those are in good shape. The tables, though, are just getting a little older, a little beat up, and are very heavy. So, we're hoping to spend right about the $5,000 mark by 18 tables, very similar to this, that we can then put in there. And we found homes for the 18 tables there between our Parks Department facilities and my office. We can repurpose those. We're not sending anything to the landfill. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on. If you turn to the HR tab, I'll have our HR director come down, Crystal. There are two requests here. One actually belongs in the other government. I know when we first started, I said, put it in HR. We pulled out the performance software, and I told you to put this benefit, fund reserve in there. That one should actually go into the other government. My apologies for that. But Crystal and Christina will be talking about both of those, so it'll be good for our discussion right now.
Is that better? All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having Christina and I this afternoon to represent both the HR request as well as the compensation committee. I would like to first cover the compensation committee benefit recommendations, which is the slide that you have in front of you in your books and up on the screen. Currently, the compensation committee comprises Bruce Freckleton, Lorelei McVeigh, Scott Coliani, myself, Todd Lavoy, as well as Mayor Simison. The purpose of the compensation committee is to annually review our current total compensation program, which we have been doing and will continue to do. And because of those efforts, I'm here in front of you today to discuss some benefit recommendations that we would like for your consideration for FY '21. So, the first five that I'm going to cover with you are high-level. They do not have an enhancement in your book tied to them as that an enhancement was not required. So, the committee would like to propose the recommendation for our vacation leave benefit that's currently offered, which is policy 4.2. Currently, today, the accrual rates, I see some confusion. Shall I stop?
Sure. It's not in there.
It's not in the book.
It's not in there.
This person, right, sorry.
Got it.
I'm going to cover it high-level, but I can come back at a later date if you have questions. It doesn't require an enhancement for the first five. So, currently today, we have vacation accruals that are within the policy manual that at a minimum for general employees is eight hours per pay cycle, all the way up to your 25-year of experience employee earning 16 hours per month. That has not been updated in at least 10 years that I've been with the city. The compensation committee took a look at that. We looked externally across other municipalities to see what was being offered to ensure that we were in a competitive spot in regards to our accruals. So, what we would like to propose for consideration for FY '21 would be to adjust those accrual earnings from a minimum of 12 hours per month to a maximum of 18 hours per month. That's the first aspect of that benefit.
One more time. What, what?
From a minimum of eight hours to 12 hours, and a maximum of 16 hours to 18 hours.
Can you do us all a favor, and I'm really sorry, but can you convert it for like an average full-time employee into days? Is that possible?
It goes from a day a month to a day and a half a month.
There you go.
Okay.
For new employees on a graduated basis up through 25 years of employment.
Got it. And is there a thing where, a lot of places, like if you've been there for five years, you get extra vacation? Do we have any kind of?
Every, every two years, it adjusts a small fraction.
Okay.
So, that is a range from date of hire for a brand-new employee to a 25-years-of-service-plus employee is that range from 12 hours or day and a half to 18 hours per pay cycle.
Crystal, I want to make sure I understood. Is it eight hours per pay period or eight hours per month?
Same.
Same thing. Use finance terminology and.
I was thinking of a buy.
And our, in HR terminology, they've asked us to shift to pay cycle, so that's what I'm making an effort to do to support them. Okay? The additional request that we have for the vacation leave benefit, currently today, we do not recognize as an organization external hires to the city and any prior relevant and applicable experience that they have in the job that they would be entering into the city. And so, the committee would like to recommend that, in conjunction with the department director, as well as myself as the HR director, that we have the ability to recognize prior experience in a job when coming into the city and place them appropriately into the scale. So, what that means is rather than asking, for example, a police officer from NAPA who may, or another entity, excuse me, that chooses to come to Meridian, and they have been a police officer for five years, that we're not asking them to join the city of Meridian and come in at the very bottom of zero, but we would then, in conjunction between the two department directors, evaluate that and consider approving bringing them in at the five-year level of the job experience that they have to here at the city. Okay?
Is that only for police and fire?
No.
Okay.
And any position.
So, you said two directors. I didn't know if you meant just.
Nope. Okay.
Got it.
The department director and the HR director would make that, that decision.
Okay.
Okay?
Crystal?
Yes.
Question on that. Are there any other accruals, I'm trying to run through my head real quick, that are also based on length of service that you could then say, well, if you're doing it for vacation, we can do it, you should do it for this?
No, the other accrual, or excuse me, Councilmember Hoagland, the current accrual that would be applied to sick leave is a standard eight hours per month, regardless of years of service, with a cap of 720 hours.
Okay.
So, it's not based on tenure or years of service, other than the vacation leave that I recall off the top of my head. I get the thumbs up from our city attorney.
All right. Can you tell me if, how common of a practice this is, based in area businesses? Is this normal? Is it becoming normal? It's not something I've experienced in any place I've gone, but.
Normally, as far as accrual rates or as far as increasing our?
Having, coming in and getting credit for experience gained elsewhere and coming in.
That has not been a standard or normal practice across employers previously. We are starting to see a small shift in that area. For us to be able to do that will allow us an even greater opportunity to obtain or attract some talent, skilled talent, expertise talent, to here at the city of Meridian. It is something that we're starting to see a shift towards in the employment landscape, and would certainly give us a competing edge, if you will, with the market and in hiring and attracting that top talent that we're working towards each and every day.
People don't want to give up their 20 years of tenure with their vacation and come back here and start brand-new. We actually had an offer to an employee that it's, their job offer may be contingent on whether or not you approve that portion of the policy. Yeah, so, that's, because they're moving from out of state, and they're coming from a place where they've got five weeks of vacation, and they don't want to come into a job where they get 12 days.
And, Mr. Mayor, I completely understand that. It's, I see it, though, as it's becoming a, an arms race, if you will. Usually, it was reward. If you, the length of time you stayed with an employer, you were gaining these benefits. So, it was attractive not to leave. Now, it's going to be, well, now I can, I can move to the city of Meridian, I can get this experience, and I can go in. But then, if someone else is doing that, and then I can hop over here when that time is up, there's, you don't build any of that security. Not to say that that is there anymore like it used to be, but it's just, it's just an interesting dynamic that's occurring up there.
It's a shift in focus for the employment landscape. You're absolutely correct. However, if we're doing our due diligence, which is my role and my staff's role to ensure that we have a competitive accrual rate or vacation leave benefit in front of you that we offer to the city every year, we should be able to maintain and keep that top talent that we pursue and bring onboard. So, it's one of those employment challenges that is shifting and changing, and we are in pulse with.
It definitely is changing. Appreciate that, Crystal.
You're welcome. The final aspect of this particular benefit, currently today, there is an introductory period of employment for employees that join the city. General employees has a six-month introductory period of employment. Our recommendation to the council would be that we eliminate the director-only approval of vacation time during their six months, during their first six months of employment, and allow the hiring supervisor, who is more in touch and in tune with the employee and their performance and their ability to pick up the job and move along and understand the city's processes and things of that nature, actually understand their job, and put that authority back into the supervisor's hands. Because operationally, they know whether or not that employee can be away from work and still maintain the learning that they're achieving at the city that's expected within the first six months of their employment.
Okay, Crystal. So, sorry, I just want to rewind a little bit and make sure I understood. So, the like sort of length of service bonus, if you will, in someone's vacation accrual, how long do they have to be here to get that?
They start earning date of hire.
No, but for extra accrual?
As the mayor mentioned, every two years, our accrual rate will adjust.
Okay. And what is the maximum?
Currently, today, it's 16 hours per pay cycle or per month.
Okay.
We're proposing 18 hours.
Okay.
Per pay cycle per month.
Yep.
Crystal, do we have an estimate, I mean, this last piece about allowing a supervisor to approve vacation time, there's no budgetary impact on that, I guess?
They've earned it. It's in there.
I appreciate, we're, I'm trying to understand how this is couched within the conversation around the department budget. Help me connect the two.
It's not. I was asked to at least give you an overview of the recommendations for the FY '21 budget that the mayor alluded to when he opened the conversations. The last two that I have are directly related to the budget. I'm happy to.
We can skip over the rest of them.
Skip over them and bring them back later.
This is one that actually Councilman Borton and I have talked about. I think the policies itself doesn't have a budgetary impact. The back end of it could.
Sure.
But it's an important part of our conversation, and especially as we go into other elements.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's a question I'd have. Is this, is this policy or is this procedure?
Well, that's where our conversation.
For the sake of time, I think it makes sense to. Yes, sir. Sorry, Dean. For the sake of time, to have these non-budgetary ones, they're going to come up in a separate council meeting for discussion. They can come out, sent to everybody, so we can see them in advance, and then chew on it then, because there should be some good discussion with each of these.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I think if we go through them today, it's going to invite that discussion that we don't have.
It at least gives you a flavor, though, especially as I alluded to, the 3% and not doing employees' adjustments, that I think it is important for you to take into consideration the other things that we're proposing for the employees as part of that process.
Got it. Oops, frame up.
So, continue or move to the enhancements and bring this back later?
Move to the enhancements.
Thank you. Okay. So, the two enhancements that you have in front of you, the first one, I'm going to speak directly to, or the first two, and then Christina's going to speak to another one. So, one of the current benefits that we offer today is around education reimbursement. Currently, the policy and the benefit offers regular full-time employees the opportunity to be reimbursed up to $2,600 per accounting fiscal year. And we are proposing that we increase that to $3,000 per accounting fiscal year.
Crystal?
Go ahead.
Does the education that they're seeking have to tie to their position?
No, not directly. It can be their position. It can be professional growth. It can be growth in the city. It can be a number of different things. We want to support and encourage the development of all of our staff and the interests that they have.
When was the last time it was increased and from what level? Sorry.
Last year, right?
Let us know.
Last year, yes. This FY '20. We went, we increased it. We doubled it from 1,000 to 2,000.
And I think this is one that you will see each year, potentially moving forward, to a different number. And we'll see how much there's an appetite for council on this one.
I'd love to see the average cost of a class at Boise State or something as a comparison, if that's at all possible. Not, not right this minute, and just like down the road.
I happen to have a college-age son, and I just went to a community college, and a full load is approximately 3,000 just in tuition at a community college level.
Per?
Per semester.
Semester, okay. That helps me think through it.
And our benefit covers the cost, or contributes to the cost of tuition, these books, registration, not just the course credits.
Crystal, just because I'm making sure that this hasn't changed, no obligation from the employee, once they take advantage of this, to provide anything of benefit to the city. Semester ends, they can quit the next day.
That is correct. We've been tracking and monitoring that over the last several years, specifically since 2017, and we've seen very few individuals who've participated in this program leave the city.
Great.
But of course, I think it's been four.
Sharing that analysis, I think, would be really helpful.
And, Crystal, is there a minimum GPA they have to maintain while attending or anything like that?
Yeah, they either have to have a C average or higher for the course in order to be reimbursable and/or a pass fail, depending on the requirements of the course itself. Councilmember Cavanagh, in our information, to answer your question, from 2020, we have not had anyone leave who's currently participating in the program.
Sure.
In FY '19, we had three.
Of how many?
Out of 16 participants. For FY '18, we had one leave the city out of 12 participants. And for FY '17, we had nobody leave out of five participants.
Is that tracked within the year, or is that within a 12-month period, within a 24-month period, 18-month?
It's within.
Revolving calendar?
The fiscal year is how we track that.
Okay.
Any other questions on education reimbursement before I move on to our next recommendation? I am going to refer a little bit more to notes on this one, because I simply don't want to miss anything. So, the second enhancement that you have in front of you is for the establishment of a new program, which we would like to explore, a employee commuter reimbursement and incentive program. So, this would be for employees' use of shared service and/or non-vehicular modes of transportation to and from work, rather than just their personal vehicle. The program would support the city's goals to reduce traffic congestion, curb air pollution, and minimize parking constraints that we are experiencing here at the city. We would develop an employee survey and send that out and solicit feedback from our employees if there was to be a program, what value they would find, and would they utilize that. The program itself, we'd like to consider options such as van reimbursement, bus pass reimbursement through VRT, carpool incentives, biking, walking, just different methods to and from work. And so, with your approval, what we would like to do is secure some funding to be able to establish a program in FY '21 to address the city's goals and provide different options to employees for their commute needs to and from the workplace.
Crystal, to clarify, is that the $20,000 miscellaneous contribution request?
That is the $20,000, yes.
I just want to say, I love this idea. This is something I thought at length about and would like to see our private sector do this as well, especially around transportation hubs like the 10 Mile Interchange. Love to see that happen, and if the city sets a.
And if the city sets a, if the city is able to successfully implement it and sets an example for our private sector, I think that would be fantastic. I don't have a way to really judge whether that $20,000, however, will, will be used or how, I mean, can you give us, how did you come to that number? And-
I'll, I'll speak to that, because it was, it was just pulling a number out as a placeholder starter. So when I've looked at this, I've looked at doing up to 50% reimbursement for commuter ride, 50% for bus pass, maybe a set dollar amount for people that want a carpool. We would have to develop, we would need to do a survey, find out what this, what this employees may be willing to do and see the value. This number, to me, would be a first-come, first-served, if even at all used. But then we would evaluate moving forward from that standpoint. But to give you an example, if you lived out in Caldwell and you wanted to participate, it's $100 a month for commuter ride. So it could be $50 times 12, a $600 benefit if we had people that want, wanted to take advantage of it. I, I don't know how successful it will be, but I think it's worth exploring. This is something we could work on. And by August, if we have zero interest from the employees, we could remove from the budget if there's not a, a interest from employees.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. I think that's where, I'm super supportive of the, the concept. I think like my fellow council members, that I was trying to figure out the 20,000 without a plan. It's hard to say 20,000 makes sense, maybe it's 10, maybe it's 50. I think, for me right now, this is a little premature. If you've got better answers by the time, or, I mean, ideally, I mean, this is something that I am not opposed to, but I'm not supportive of it being in our current budget right now without more information. So if we can attain that, I think it's easier-
I didn't wanna put it out to the employees and start asking them if there wasn't general council support for even the concept.
It's a chicken and the egg situation. Totally get that. I think, I'm supportive with the details that show us how it's gonna be a success.
I'm supportive as well. I, I was wondering if there was a per, a cap per employee, if that would be, if you could come back and, and, you know, versus the first-come, first-served element, I would expect that there'd be more of like a cap per employee and that, and that this 20,000 would, would allow for so many employees to utilize it or something along those lines. Okay? I'm gonna see a page.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I would love it if, if you could check if there is a way for people to leverage that into a pre-tax spending account? Because I know in some states it's impossible to do that. Because then that would go farther.
I, I guess I would turn to, is there any reason why we couldn't add it? I know it's offered through our benefits program. They have the same capability, but we've never offered that.
I would have to look into that. I'm not 100% sure.
But we can look into that and bring that back. I captured that. Thank you very much.
It's a pre-tax.
Is this gonna be a scenario where that employee would submit their cost to the city and be reimbursed? And if so, is that gonna be, is there gonna be a heavy administrative element to be fulfilling the reimbursement? Is that something finance is gonna do?
So to answer that question, then I'm gonna throw some of that to Todd to answer your question, Councilmember Pro. It's both, right? So you're asking one or the other. What we're looking at is reimbursement for aspects of it and incentive for the other aspects of it, to flush out some of those logistics. Administratively, it would need to be a partnership between human resources, but primarily with finance. We generally facilitate reimbursement and incentive-type processes. They're the ones that actually handle the financial aspect of that.
Sounds like a little, a little budgetary judo, it sounds like.
Yes. And also an expectation, from my standpoint, participation may require them not being eligible for a parking permit at City Hall. You know, if they're gonna ask for reimbursement, that that's what they get. They can still come in on days where they gotta drive and get it temporary. But from a general standpoint, you know, it's a trade-off. Because the end result is, for me, the biggest value to the city is reducing our parking spaces here that we're taking up by more land.
Mr. Mayor, just to kind of throw an interesting wrinkle in this. And years ago, when I worked in DC, I took advantage of this to use Metro. Actually getting a Metro card pretty much covered my weekly commute to and from. And that's always a nice deal. But you're in a densely populated urban area back there, as you well know yourself. And our, and our goal here is we need density to create better public transportation and different things. Are we encouraging people now by this to move out of Meridian because of affordability and those types of things? And, you know, I mean, now you're doing, you're going against one of your stated goals of what we want to accomplish. So I, I don't know. I, I don't think there'd be that many that would do that. But at the same time, with the way our, our cost of housing goes up, we might have to, have to look at that. I don't know.
The cost of replacing them would be a fraction if they are willing to stay because of this. Because if they're gonna move, they're gonna move already.
Yeah.
I don't think a small reimbursement of 300 a year or something is gonna, I mean, it would, it wouldn't affect my decision to move or not, but it could affect some individuals.
So I was an employee here, lived in Old Town. If this was offered to me and I left my truck at home and walked to work, I'd do it in an instant. I mean, so when I live down here, Houston, so.
Just a thought, you know? It's just one of those things that, it's interesting how people, you know, you see it in the federal government. The federal government does something and people respond in a way that you go, they go, oh, whoa, we didn't see that coming. I mean, it can happen here too, you know?
So our, our goal would be to see if we can get a more flushed-out program by the time we get to the August number. So if you can leave this in until then, and if it needs to drop down and out, we will do it if we don't have enough interest or details.
Yeah.
What do you like, request?
Just two thoughts. Number one, I think this is a great-
That's everybody.
Just, just one thought. I think, I think that, you know, this is a great program with a bus system that's robust and can get, you know, people from A to Z. We're, we have one bus route from 10 Mile that goes to, to Village. I, I think that our, our busing program isn't quite substantial enough to dedicate resources to this quite yet personally. And number two, I think it's less expensive to do telework. And I think that we've noticed this during COVID that, I think it's been proven that, you know, there's, there are, there are segment of our workforce that can work effectively from home. So if you're, if you're worried about congestion or parking at City Hall, then keep them home and let them do their jobs at home. So I, I, I won't be supportive of this, no matter how, I mean, I shouldn't say no matter how. I mean, it's very unlikely I'll be supportive of this going forward. I just think it's, I think it's premature.
I think it's all part of the plan. And we have some employees who we've proven can't and shouldn't work from home. And this is perhaps their benefit to be able to use these type of services. You, you can't have someone whose job is frontline customer counter for walk-ins do that job from home. Unless you close City Hall, which is an option.
I smell a boat coming.
So we could, we could just close City Hall and we would solve a lot of these issues.
Preposterous.
Let's fuck with that one.
But, but the, and to that note, the remote work program only allows for those individuals to work at half or less of their time off-site. So it's, none of these positions that we have are gonna be full-time off-site.
It's all, it's all part of the larger goals. Not one is gonna solve any of these issues.
Great.
I'm open to hearing more.
We'll be more than happy to bring back more.
Good questions.
Any questions on the two that I've presented before we move to the last one from Christina?
Yes, my last question is, don't you wish you were in public works so they don't get hard questions like that?
Yeah, we will. We'll find out. HR seems to be the one, but that's okay. We enjoy the conversation and the support and-
Will there be a well with this program?
Are you gonna dig it?
There's a well.
Or a digester. Skating involved? Yeah. The skating is involved. Sign me up.
All right, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. The next, oh, I've got two now. The next request in front of you is funding for reserves for dental vision, self-funding. For those of you that were on the council last year and the year before, I was in front of you quite a bit talking about self-funding. It is the funding mechanism behind our benefits programs. We are realizing some savings, although COVID has thrown a little wrench into really defining what those projections are for our first year self-funding our medical plan. But we are realizing some savings moving and definitely some flexibility in our medical plan moving to self-funding. So the benefits committee has vetted this process out, made the recommendation to the city of Meridian Employees Benefit Trust. The trustees have approved moving forward with self-funding dental vision. Department of Insurance does require three months of claims reserve, projected claims reserve in our trust account in order to cover any claims that may come in. And so that's what I'm in front of you requesting. We may be in a situation at the end of the year where we have enough cost savings in our medical plan to cover this, but I needed to have a Plan B to ensure that we can make it through the Department of Insurance's requirements. So I'll stand for any questions.
Christina, I, I just wanna understand, when you say self-funding, are you talking about the city supplementing the difference between what insurance exists and what the employee pays? Or is it, or is this entire, is this funding the entire cost of the employee's benefit?
So let me give, for, for those of you that are new on the council, let me give you kind of a high-level view of, of fully insured, which is what we currently are for our dental vision and self-funding. So under a fully insured plan, the city and the employee pays premiums to the carrier. So in this case, Delta Dental or BSP, they pay all of the claims from that. If there is excess, they've made a profit. If there is not enough, then they've had a loss. What we're doing is we're pulling that into our trust. The city and the employee are paying those premiums or those contributions into the trust. And then we're paying claims out of that. We've done a study to show where we would sit and we think, I mean, we can project out that we would have a plus in that reserve. And it gives us greater plan flexibility. With a fully insured plan, you get the canned plan and you don't have the ability to make a whole lot of adjustments with it. With the self-funded, you get kind of a menu of options and you can decide what you cover and what you don't. So it gives us flexibility, allows us to incur some cost savings, which we then can put back into additional benefits at a future date.
Are the funds that are accumulated, are the funds that are accumulated in the trust being invested?
Not at this time.
Because they're not liquid enough? Or would they be able to be?
They could be at a later point in time. But right now, we're in our first year and so we haven't realized enough to even consider investments.
Christina, what are some of the high-level benefits to our employees by moving to this route? I think you kind of touched on some flexibility that comes to the city, potential cost savings, which I appreciate. But how, how does this positively impact our employees by moving in this direction?
For the dental vision specifically, we're hoping to realize cost savings that we can enhance the benefits. So for instance, Delta Dental right now has a maximum coverage of $1,500 per year. If we have a cost savings, we can use the dollars in that trust, those cost savings, to maybe raise that to $2,000 a year and cover the cost and whole lot of the trust rather than having the city and the employee pay the additional increase that that would incur.
How, how did you get the preliminary data? Not knowing the, the health concerns of the individual employees, I assume that's private data. How did you come to then to these numbers? Where did you get these estimates from based on really not knowing? Do, I assume you know the number of employees that are using the services based on reports you get from the provider, but how did you come to those figures?
Yes, the carrier has provided us what we call renewals. So that's what our projections for the premiums or the contributions will be for the next year. We multiply that out by three. Those are just estimates. What we will do before we finalize this number and before we submit that to the Department of Insurance is we will have an actuarial study done that will truly assess where this number should land. But it shouldn't exceed 130,000.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, all right. Let's move on to our next with IT, with Dave.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm back. We have two budget requests in front of you today. One is for, this first one is for communications infrastructure extensions. This is part of our ongoing efforts to improve connectivity among city facilities for public safety needs, general city government business. This request specifically will be leveraged to help us with a couple opportunities we have to work with ACHD on their projects to get infrastructure in the ground while they have the roads open and whatnot. So 10 Mile, Eagle, Linder, all to help with redundant connectivity needs for fire stations. I think we're gonna be able to provide redundancy to the wastewater treatment plant. Those are a couple of the areas that we're looking to hit with the funds this coming year. So with that, I'll stand for any questions on this budget request. The next budget request we have in front of you is for what we're calling enterprise content management. This is a multi-year project as well. We started this last year and this is, this is what we're gonna call Phase Two as we continue to expand this solution out to other city departments. This coming year, we're planning to expand it to our community development and public works departments. To give a high-level overview about enterprise content management, this is really document management, handling workflows and forms, and records retention, all in an umbrella system, which is a system that the clerk's office uses for records management currently, which is called Laserfish. So we upgraded the system this year, added some new bells and whistles features that we can use to create new processes, electronic processes throughout the city. And we're going to continue to expand that. So with that, I'll stand for any questions on this budget request.
Hello. So is the, how much more investment in future years is required to 100% convert to like whatever end state you're trying to achieve?
Councilmember Strater, we, this is year two of about $100,000. Next year, we anticipate another $100,000 to cover most of the other departments, which does not include police officers, firefighters, things like that. But for staff that are in the office that regularly touch city records, next year with another $100,000, we'll cover the rest of the city.
Is this a cloud-based system?
The option that we went with is not a cloud-based system. They have a cloud-based option if we wanted to go that direction. However, the cost is substantially more. So we chose to go with the on-prem system, knowing that if we wanted to transition that direction, we could.
Gotcha. And does it come with, you know, some kind of backup? I'm using like a personal computer as my analogy for this, which is probably not an appropriate comparison.
It was zip drive.
Okay.
Zip drive. Wow.
I don't think we use-
So it's handled by, it will be handled, or it is currently handled and will continue to be handled by the city-wide backup system that we used.
Okay.
So. If you'd like details on that, some future point, I'd be happy to provide that.
Any more questions? All right. Thanks, Dave. Move on to, this is the Roma Parks Interact because the position for maps currently sits in that. You will find the enhancement, I believe, in your other government. So with that, we can turn it over to Steve to talk through this.
My first time making this presentation, but this is a, an annual request. Frankly, probably could become part of the base budget based on previous discussions because it is based on ordinance. So this is per city Meridian ordinance, 1-9-4, 50 cents per capita, 50,000 max. So it's, we've been at that for a while now. This is the annual request for the public art budget. The actual projects for it to be used for will come back to council. Right now, they are updating their, the art master plan. And so, you know, there will be future discussions about what the funds will be spent on. But this is just to give the spending authority per the existing ordinance. And I'll stand for any questions.
How long, sorry, don't mind. How, how long has it been set at 50,000? How many years has it been at this level?
Ever since we reached 100,000, which do you-
Last week, three years ago.
Last week, three years ago.
Four.
Five years ago, we were at 91,000, so somewhere in the three, four-year range.
This would require an ordinance change if you want to change that amount.
I got you. Yeah, I was just trying to understand that. It's a little different than the way the rest of our budgets are working.
Yeah, it is different.
The ordinance created this, therefore it is capped by ordinance.
That is correct.
Requires changes to change.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
Yep.
Does, and this is either for Mayor, Mr. Neri, or Steve, I don't know who I'm, this kind of popped in my head. Does the ordinance allow council, I guess, does the ordinance prohibit council from directing a theme or potential content for a piece of art that would be funded?
No, I don't think there's anything that restricts that. There is a, you know, a capital improvements plan that the Subcommittee of MAC updated last fall that would have some of the carry-forward funds from this year be spent next year toward the, some art for the Trailhead Project, and then this would be one of two years going toward a more significant art project in Discovery Park. But again, I would say hold off until the update, the Arts Commission finishes updating their master plan, and then they'll come back to you with a recommendation for that.
Okay. They can leverage, like, I think what's interesting is there's private foundation funds and private philanthropists that could donate to the Meridian Art Foundation, and they can leverage that. I'd be curious if they could, this sounds a little out there, but just goes nice enough to invite me to a really cool crowdfunding class, and I'm curious if our funds could be leveraged with crowdfunding by the public to do additional artwork.
I suppose any of that's on the table for future discussion. I would never say no to additional, you know, private funding.
Just throwing that out there.
All right, thank you. Question, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Moving on, this is also found in your other government, transportation projects. This is Mayor's.
Yeah, so originally, I had not planned on putting any transportation funding into this year's budget. Earlier this year, when I was meeting with people from ACHD, it was suggested that we might have some projects which would fall off due to shortfalls in their budget funding. So I worked with Todd to put in some funding just to help make sure that the projects would not be delayed if there was a lack of funding for ACHD. This is part of the larger conversation that I've been having with many of you in terms of using our general fund dollars to advance or keep on track our ACHD projects. My intention is for these to be done through reimbursement agreements, so these are funds that we would have to expend, that we would be repaid back at a future date. That is what is in this, in this enhancement request. As of right now, I'm not aware of any of our projects that are planned to fall off. I will not be upset if you guys don't fund this, it is already funded with fund balance. It would be something that, one way or the other, we would come back to council at the appropriate time, either with an agreement or with a budget amendment, if there was something specific during this next fiscal year. I think I'm looking more concerned about stuff that's in, in budget years 23, 24, which is if we can identify any road improvement projects, that's likely how long it will be before they could be, utilize our funding to help move them forward in a realistic manner. But I at least wanted to put this out there for part of our conversation today, so that you are aware of the concept, and if for any reason we hear from ACHD about one of our projects that may be delayed, knowing that from fund balance, this is what I would be looking to you to help fund. So I will leave that conversation there. I think I've talked to all of you about this as a general concept, but I'll leave it to you whether or not you have a desire to put it into the budget or not. It really won't matter that much because it's already coming from fund balance, and there's nothing specifically tied to this project at this time. So we can move on unless there's further conversation or questions.
I think I'd be more inclined to do like a one-off, you know, as you mentioned here, as the mayor mentioned in regard to if the need arises and there's a specific project and a specific amount, I think I'd be more interested in a budget amendment process than one of the subject.
And if that's how council would like to prefer with any transportation stuff, is budget amendments. I won't bring these forward in future years as part of the enhancement or, sorry, request process. Thank you. But just again, just want to get it on the record for future conversation.
Mr. Mayor, appreciate hearing from my colleague. So I love this process. I'm on the opposite side of the coin. I think this is a great use of fund balance. It's a great plan, I think, identifying it early as part of our budget process. And again, maybe this is part of our annual budget process. We're talking about this on a regular basis. I think planning, again, this use of fund balance, ideally those dollars to be repaid at a later point in time, seems to make sense. I get it, I typically get a little, I like my details, you know, and when you're talking about a million dollars, I would typically like a lot of details, but I think the plan that you've laid out seems to make a lot of sense, and I'm supportive of it as it's presented. To bring it back as a, as an enhancement at a later point in time, I mean, I'll clearly probably be supportive of it then as well, but I just, I think this is a good use, and it's appropriate.
Well, there's 15 million in the CFP roughly, give or take, 100,000 here, 500,000 there, for the, for this moving forward. This is likely what will compete, road projects will compete with your streetlights. That's, and maybe they both coexist, maybe they don't, but that's what you're, that's what I said, is the money that I put in the CFP, I wouldn't let up, hamper other needs or requirements of the city. But anyways, we can move on from that standpoint, but I won't be upset if you choose not to have this in the budget.
One quick question, this being my first year doing this, how is the approval process? So, so an expense comes in, is it still coming and being reviewed before council to, it goes on the consent agenda essentially?
This would require a contract of some sort.
Okay, so.
It would likely be a department presentation, budget amendment, contract. You're going to see it three or four times before anything would ever move forward, even if you put this in the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I tend to lean towards Councilman Burt's thought on it as well of devils in the details. I guess if and when that project comes forward, and if it's lined out with a budget amendment, we'd, we'd address it at that time.
Right.
Seems to be a more prudent path.
That, that's my intention. My intention is either have budget amendments or plan, but this was for discussion purposes for this year, based upon previous discussions I had with ACHD, and I want to make sure we had something to have a conversation if needed, but it's not looking that way right now.
And that reimbursement process is legal. We've checked that box, right?
Yes. We'll have to work with them, and I've had those conversations.
See if I got a Mr. Neri nod.
So far, no one has pointed any reason why we can't do a reimbursement agreement with ACHD. They actually have to learn more about it. They haven't done them in a while. Their new leadership has not been doing them, but we're working, we're working in conversations with them.
Interesting. Good question.
My only hesitation, I think having the discussion is really good. I wouldn't want to stop us from doing that. I hesitate a little bit to earmark one priority without taking a consistent methodology for similar priorities, because I do think there is that give and take. I think I could get on board almost either way, though, like if, if it's with the understanding that transportation will then necessarily be cut in order to pursue other priorities as a result of earmarking, that, that's okay, or looking at projects as they come up. But it sounds like either way, we are saying that, so.
My assumption would be if we, if you decide we don't want to go this way, a million dollars is pulled from fund balance, goes back, I mean, it's not like you, so.
Yeah, right.
True.
Okay, it never gets spent if you don't see a contract.
Yeah.
For a project, and it would just roll back in the following year. But again, I just want to make sure we had a conversation because it is an important part of my state of the city budget, the state of the city when you watch it next week, so.
So Mr. Mayor, so the city can, can allocate capital funds in advance to another governmental entity, whether it's ACHD or their construction projects. It could happen for the school district as well.
They're both schools. If you have that, if you have that fund.
I mean, is it the same structure?
The kind of fund that I was talking about.
The same structure that permits that decision to enter into a relationship with the highway district, to also allow a municipality to do the same thing with the school district?
Flashrooms.
Or an irrigation district?
Or a fire district.
Or a mosquito, or a library district.
Or ACHD district, or Ada County, yeah. There's nothing that prohibits from having relationships, and everything has its own level. I mean, our CFO talked to ACHDs of, you know, because they have to carry the balance on there, they have to carry it as debt on their books, and they have to be willing to do those things.
Right.
So there's, there's always those levels of discussion, but as much as I would like to build schools, we don't have enough fund balance to do that. Public Works does, but I don't think we can.
So I'm curious, I, I'm curious the answers to that question, because I think regardless of the amount of, no, whoa, no worry, I'm not going to throw a hand grenade out there. I, I think it would be important to know that because we do have, hey, maybe we can't, it's not realistic, the city of Meridian can't afford to build a high school, it's not happening.
Or an elementary school.
I'm with you. I'm tracking, but, right, I, there are other competing priorities and things we need to look at. I don't, I'd like to hear the answer to that question, just holistically. If that can be done with ACHD, where do we draw the line? Who else can it be done with? I'd like to know that.
Good question. From my perspective, there are no lines, it's just a matter of priorities and decisions. This is something that we could have done with the library district had they not got their levy passed if we wanted to do that, and have, have them, in my viewpoint, everything's in the details, but I, the school district budget compared to our budgets, they're not even in the same.
I understood.
Realm, you know.
They are, they are Meridian kids, though.
Some.
Some. Some Boise kids in there.
I hear you. A bunch of Meridian kids in there.
Are we good to move on?
Is there any concern that there will be a precedent set such that other, that the groups will want to start coming to us and making requests proactively?
Absolutely. We have the money, and we get it paid back, I don't know what the problem is. And I, I go with those two things. If we have the money and if we get paid back, I'm not interested in starting to give them money to build roads. That's, that's a different story. This is all about how legal can it be done and we, and us getting paid back. The difficulty will be, when will we be paid back?
Right.
And where we invest in which road projects may make all the difference in that answer to that question.
If it's a year from now, in. If it's 10 years from now?
I think you're probably looking three to seven years, and, and it may be gradual over that timeframe depending on how much you're talking about. If you're talking a million dollars, that's one thing. If you're talking 15 million, expecting to be back in next year, that's another thing.
You got to keep it in check.
So, questions?
Interesting. Lots of them.
Should we move on to the next one? Are we good?
Yep.
This is also Mayor's Realm, Community Project Funding for 20,000.
So this one real quick, this is, you may have, you've heard the presentations regarding participatory budgeting over the last several years and conversations with the council on board, and we thought about going a different direction in terms of instead of doing a participatory budgeting project, looking at doing more of a community grant program. So we've been working on what a community grant program might look like. This is the same dollar figure that was in participatory budgeting, and I think from a practical standpoint, you could have either A, people come forward and say, we want to do a participatory budgeting project. You could have MYAC or MSAT come forward and say, we think we've done a good job, we'd like to request $20,000 to do a participatory budgeting program in one of our parks. Conversely, it could be an HOA that wants to see an amenity added. The details aren't there. I'm first to admit the details are not there. Most of the first submit, the Boise's program is $800,000, and this is 20,000. So kind of going back to, we always don't do what our neighbors can do, spite our size, similarities or dissimilarities. But this is the start of that conversation. We, we do have a draft of some elements that we'd love to share with council, so I'd like to have a, just encourage you to think about this, this would be another one, but if you don't feel comfortable by August with the program, but we would come before council at a workshop and share with you what we have in mind for further conversation.
On that note, I guess, Mayor, from where I'm coming from with this, I love that we're saying how can we level up when it comes to this. If we don't have the details for this year, I would hope that we would still keep the participatory budgeting program, but open it up to the public before going to evolve it to more of a, of a neighborhood or a community grant-based program. Mayor and I have talked a little bit about this, I don't know if 20,000 is enough to get it done, so we may want to have a conversation about a few more additional dollars. So I don't know what you've got and when you're prepared to share it. I know we're on a, more of a compressed timeline. I would, I would like to feel more comfortable, we're headed on this piece by the end of June. If we can't, then that's fine, but this is something that.
I imagine what you'd see is a presentation in July, you know, by your June, again, you can set your number in June, and you can always go below for the following one. If your intention would be to give this more money rather than 20,000, then that'd be a question mark, but, you know, in August, you can make that determination if it's not there to remove it.
And that's the hard part, is I think that, kind of getting a good sense about where this program could go, to me, would maybe dictate if, if the 20,000 is, is appropriate. One project for one group, 20,000 seems appropriate. If we're wanting to invite four or five organizations, 20,000 split between, you know, for other organizations, 5,000 bucks, and boy, I think we've all been here at least long enough to know that when government gets involved, 5,000 is just almost enough to pay for the power to bring everybody together. So we've got to make sure that we're using the right dollars to achieve the outcome that the program would hope to achieve.
And even to that point, I mean, if you're talking only construction projects and parks, then yes, one. If the requirements are it's got to be spent on public property, then you really are talking to, that's what all, if you look at everything that's been done for participatory budgeting, it's a project in a park. Yes. I don't know that this is what this should be. Should this be services? Should this be, you know, allowed on private parks, you know, private open space in, in communities? Those are the questions I think we have with council to determine what type, if anything.
I would like to say that I'm only in favor of considering an increase if, if it is a grant-based scenario where the, there has to be an application made and there has to be sufficient information provided. You know, I, again, this is my first year, but having been on the Steering Committee for the Community Development Block Program, now that is very specific, and that is not as broad, but there, I mean, there's, there's more funds than, than are being applied for. And, and some of those funds can be used for community programs, the Meridian Senior Center for example is applying for funds for, for food boxes. It's, I'm wondering if the first year, if, if we're going to even have enough traction to get the community to making, be making the applications in its first year, and maybe the 20,000 is appropriate for the first year, because you've got to get the word out, you've got to get people that are able to bring the, the information for applying for it and whatnot. It depends on how strict it's, you know, the requirements are.
It must have gone out. So we will bring this to the council in a July workshop for your consideration, whether or not you want to include it or not, or if you want to leave it as a participatory budgeting, but we wanted to put it out there for a revised way of thinking.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Okay, next up, I know this is listed in finance, this actually, I'll turn this over to Todd.
Counsel, this request is for $56,000 to allow the city to conduct a impact fee study. We conduct these every two to three, two to We conduct these every two to five years. The last study we did was in 2018. That was the completed study, so we started in 2017, finished in 2018 for you. An impact fee study allows us to analyze the fire, parks, and police needs for the next 10 years and allows us to develop and establish an impact fee for development, for new growth. The current study that we have in place right now expires in 2023, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
If you're looking for the enhancement, you can look in the Parks and Rec. We'll have it. It'd be the very last green sheet on that, or Fire, or Police. We've copied it three times.
Mr. Mayor, bringing this back quicker was the specific direction following the last one when we adjusted. The impact fee was to do this this fast. We had historically done it every five years and what happened with our growth rate is it was just too late, right? And we were making wild pivots every five years and this ensures a more accurate impact fee, more fair impact fee, quite frankly, because it's going to reflect our actual capital position more regularly, so.
But it's not 56 per department, it's 56,000 for the entire.
Correct.
Because it's a secret.
Dean in the middle.
So, is it my end? Okay, so the 56,000 is all three departments?
All three, yes.
Okay. Is that?
I mean, that was my question right there that she just had.
By the same contractor?
Right.
It can be. We can go out to bid again if we wanted to, or we go with the same vendor who we used last time. It's up to us. We have the, that decision.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, let's turn it over to Fire. Mark?
Dean, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent. I don't want to get in trouble. So, Mayor, Counsel, good evening. I am going to zoom through this, no pun intended. So, feel free to blatantly interrupt me as I go through it. I want to thank the staff in the Fire Department that's here and also the firefighters that aren't here that have helped us navigate through some of these requests. So, kicking off the first request for a fire inspector investigator, this has been our CIP. For the last eight years, we knew the time would come when we would need a third inspector. 3,300 inspections scheduled. We're able to do about 270 a month. That includes all the re-inspections we have to do, which is about 120. So, the reality is we're getting further and further behind. The time has come to add a third inspector as we move forward. Again, just feel free to interrupt me. Ladder truck, again, this has been in the CIP for 10 years. We knew as growth happened and we're seeing the growth, our plan is to have a ladder truck at Station 1 and Station 6 to be able to cover the entire district for those call types. It is a big request, $1.7 million. It is all impact fee eligible and we've been collecting impact fees for it. And Dale said if there's any shortage that Public Works would cover that.
What about lights? Can you change his lights?
No.
Ladder truck lights?
Good. We'll talk later. Narcotics vaults. We have narcotics on our fire engines. It's what the paramedics give for pain. The DEA changed the requirements on that as far as how we need to store them. So, basically, the narcotics need to be tracked and this is kind of the opiate crisis driving this. They need to be tracked from the time they're made to the time they're destroyed. So, JD Hendrick, our EMS chief, has been on top of that, looking at the requirements. These narcotic vaults would be in the engine and they track the individual specifically who gets into them to get the narcotics and then also tracks who destroys them when they're done. So, that's a DEA requirement coming down upon us. Heart saver alarm tones at five stations. As we built Station 6, and I think as we wrapped that up, I presented all of you, there's some things we learned with Station 6 that we really like. And one of them is the heart saver tones. At all, five of our stations minus Station 6, when those tones come on, it's a glaring, blaring, in-your-face, wake-you-up-right-now as opposed to Station 6 where it kind of ramps up. And we've got studies that we can get together with you on to review those that show that is less stress on the cardiac aspect of an individual when those tones ramp up as opposed to the right now, middle of the night, jump-you-out-of-bed tones. So, there's a lot of studies that Chief Butterfield has that we can review if you have questions about that. But our firefighters love this. It's not a glaring, blaring, 2:00 in the morning, wake-you-up massively quick tone. So, that's $14,000 to get those heart saver tones at the remaining five stations. Purchased land for the Northwest Fire Station Number 7 and Out. Well, you can see it in the picture, but the land that we're looking at is just north of the new Hawaii High School. We met with the developer about a year and a half ago. This is the Gander Creek subdivision. They would like to sell us two acres and they're also willing to donate two acres. Originally, we thought four might be too big, but we are working with the police department on a potential shared location partnership with a police substation or precinct. So, the request is for $90,000. That includes two acres for $78,000 roughly, plus some permitting and going through. So, the request is for $90,000 for the land in the northwest corner. We are requesting 12,150 for nine new AEDs. This is an expansion of what we currently have as far as our AED heart safe program. Six of those AEDs would go to the Parks Department. One unit would go to the wastewater expansion and then two would be in reserve in case we have one fail. So, we have two reserve units that we can deploy immediately. Status monitor for Fire Stations, Fire Admin. This is again, something that we found at Station 6, one of 18 and his team. When you go to Station 6, when you're in the dining room, there's a TV there that shows the system. It shows all the calls, shows where the units are. Firefighters love it because they know exactly kind of what's going on right now in the system as they look at that monitor. We would like to do that at our other five stations and one in Fire Admin. The total cost is $3,600. Really, it's a TV monitor and then, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a dongle. It's basically a mini computer that plugs right into the TV and captures that data and captures that information. So, again, feedback from the firefighters, they love this, and so we want to try and get that in the other five stations. And then I'm going to touch on two at the same time. Again, impact fee eligible and we do have the impact fees to do this, and that would be designing Fire Station 7. And the very next slide is going to be to design Fire Station Number 8. We picture an identical station, layout, floor plan, everything, no difference. And so really, it's a matter of looking at the land and how you place it on the land. We talked to the firm that we use for Station 6. That's going to be the template that we're going to use for Station 7 and 8. We'd like to get those designed now so that step is done. $600,000 is what we have in the CIP for each one of those, but we're looking at about $150,000 to $200,000 cost savings if we do them both at the same time. We felt that's worth it. So, the price that you see, the amount you see is what we have budgeted in the CFP. And in our impact fee study, we anticipate it being less, but I don't want to present that to you until we have the actual approval and then the quote from the architect to make sure that I can say the right thing on that. But we have talked to them already and there's definitely a cost savings if we do them at the same time.
Chief?
Yeah.
So, if we do the same Fire Station at 7 and 8 or one of those, that we get a 6, maybe with some minor modifications.
Yes.
Really going to cost $1.2 million?
We're going to make them sharpen their pencil. This is what we have budgeted. So, I wanted to present what we have budgeted in the impact fee fund, but we anticipate a greater savings than what you see up there on the screen.
Big savings?
Until we get hard numbers in the final written proposal.
Crazy.
Yeah, we anticipate a bigger savings.
Why, can you pull that mic up?
Sorry, Dean.
The battery's shorting.
Yeah, I see it blinking.
How's that?
It's yours.
I'll take Joe's.
Well, we have a revised estimate of the design cost by the time council is approving the budget.
Counsel, I'm straight. I don't know if we'll have the revised cost because until, and certainly Todd and maybe Keith would have to answer this as well, but until we enter into a contract with them to do the design work and they go through and we work through that whole process to get a firm final cost, I don't know if we could get that to you by July. That's why we're telling you, extreme case, 600,000, that's what we budgeted, but we anticipate much less.
And Mark, is it all impact fee eligible?
All impact fees. Impact fees are going to pay for all of this. And we do have the funds in our impact fee fund.
So, Counsel, this goes back again, both of these stations. I know I've shared with all of you, my belief that we need to open up Station 7 and 8 together as quickly as we can. This is part of that process. We believe that by designing and building at the same time, we'll see savings through that processes. I know the chief has been working on the staffing and how to make that happen. I'd like to think that we've got a solution that will enable us that we move forward with both of these projects over the next three years so we can open both by fiscal year '23. So, this would be purchasing two engines at the same time, which will save us money, designing two stations at the same time, which will save us money, and constructing two stations at the same time, which will all save us money.
I very much buy into the idea of co-designing and getting synergies between the two stations. I think it might be good to push on the firm that's doing the design to.
Yeah.
Dial that in a little more before the budget gets approved.
Mayor, Counsel, let me clarify and I just thought of something. Yep?
I saw the pitch was.
Oh, sorry. I got all excited.
Of course.
Let me clarify something and I didn't even have to look at Chief Butterfield do this. The 600,000, and we will bring that down, but that's for multiple phases of the design process. So, it's not just drawing the, the drawing that design piece also includes when you start constructing, there's pieces within that design piece as well. So, by July, I can come back with that kind of the breakdown and the phases that include or are captured in design.
So, it's design, it's design and project management and other things.
There's things that happen within that 600,000 or less that happened in the construction phase, so it's not just the actual architectural drawings that cost that. Yeah, my apologies.
Chief?
I get that right, Chief?
Yeah. How dependent are those numbers on the, on the location? How dependent on the design numbers on, and are those locations tentatively identified?
Yes. So, Station 7, you saw that request. Station 8 has already bought, the fire district bought Station 8 land already. It's in the corner of Discovery Park. So, really, the only difference in those two stations would be how the architects place it on the land and then, you know, landscaping and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, we expect those two stations to be identical.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Any questions? Any further questions for Fire?
Counsel, it is 5 o'clock, which is what we had on here. I'm going to give you two options. We can continue moving if people would like, or I've, we've been able to clear off the workshop next Tuesday if people feel like they need to leave and we could have, continue this as part of the workshop next Tuesday.
I'm a favorite.
Staff are here. We've got.
I'm good either way.
Two more items, two more sections. So, I'm good to go if staff is comfortable with that. I know staff also have obligations at night, too. We don't want to get in the way of that either.
Yeah, and that's why I didn't know what council's obligations were or otherwise.
You good, Steve? You ready?
I'm good. Ready to go.
The rest of staff, it's okay with it. It's not a conflict and.
I have plans next Tuesday. I'm ready to go.
Okay. Good to go.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Parks and Recreation has five budget requests to present to you. The first one is regarding pathway connections and Tim did a great job giving you an update last night. So, our pathways continue to be a top priority for, from our public surveys and from our Parks and Recreation Commission. This enhancement basically has two halves. The first half is a construction project along the South Slough, is also known as the Finch Lateral. It's a project that council approved for design this last year and we're proposing that it move forward into construction for next year. The second half is the concept design survey work and easements for the 12 priority connections that Tim presented to you last night. Again, just to be clear, the, this fund does not build the 12, but it does allow us to do the concept design, the research, the survey work, the outreach needed to turn them into real projects. With that all, pause. Okay, the second item is Heroes Park Parking, oh, yes.
I have a question about that. So, how likely is it that all 12 of those will stay on the list or get, you know, moved around and shifted? And does that, how, how could that affect the budget, the actual expenditure over the year?
Yeah. So, some will show themselves to be lower hanging fruit than others. It allows us to move forward with approaching property owners, et cetera, start doing concept design to be able to approach them for, here's the easement that we would need. So, some, all will, will move forward, but not all may become construction projects at the end of the year. Which ones will, which ones won't will be, you know, to be determined. So, these are the funds that we would use to, to approach those. Heroes Park Parking Expansion is the second one. We have an existing agreement with Meridian Police Activities League, Meridian PAL. That agreement was signed last year and allowed us to go into design. Design phase is wrapping up. They're already splitting 50% of the cost of that design. The agreement also contemplates them spending 50% of the cost of construction. The, you can see the capital cost is 800,000. The total request is 400 because they will, they will reimburse us half of whatever it is. And that reimbursement is not a one-time lump sum. It is much like we've been doing with the previous Heroes Park improvements. They pay us back in bi-annual increments with an additional fee with their registrations. That has gone very well, I will add, with the last ones that we did as a partnership and they paid off that agreement ahead of schedule. So, 10 Mile is currently under construction. We're, if you go out there today, there's usually cars parked along 10 Mile, curb gutter and sidewalk, you know. We need to either expand the parking on-site or reduce the number of games allowable for the youth out there. We'd prefer to expand the parking lot, so. Any questions? The third item is, so a couple of capital purchases that we've been planning for some time. These are for long-term maintenance and rehabilitation of our growing park system. The first item is a deep-tine aerator and that we already have the, the tractor that this would go on. So, it's really just that front piece that we're looking for. That deep-tine aerator allows, it penetrates deep into the soil to maximize water percolation, stimulate root growth, improve airflow to the root system. You know, what we are starting to see is with the increased demands on our event areas in particular, like car shows on the grass at Kleiner Park, just using an example, that, you know, they get, they get compacted over time. We need the ability to reduce that compaction. The intent is to get, you know, healthier plants, get them to withstand drought and the high temperatures over the summer. As mentioned, it would go on an existing Coyote tractor that we have today and we purchased the tractor anticipating attachments like this in the future. The second part of this one is a, not an attachment, but just a walk-behind slit seeder that allows us to renovate turf. These high wear areas, for example, where goals are often put, need to be rehabilitated regularly. So, this slit seeder makes a, makes a cut in the lawn and drops grass seed and just helps with germination and would be an improved, give us an improved ability to maintain those areas.
Steve?
Question?
How are we aerating the grass now? Do we have a piece of equipment? Are we contracting that out?
I will turn to Roger if you have, can come up, Roger.
Sorry, this is my first time addressing, uh, Mayor Idris.
Just sit down and chat with us. It's all good.
So, currently, we have a unit that's called a, an airway and it has star-like teeth on it. And when we first bought it, it had a tow bar. We pulled it behind a pickup and we would drive amongst the sprinklers and do that. It was very difficult. And then we modified it and put it on a three-point attachment on the current tractor that we're going to use there. And it has teeth about this deep. And we've been using that for about, I'm going to say, seven or eight years now. And it only goes that deep. And what we really need to do with this attachment is to try to get down eight, 10, 12, maybe 18 inches in a pipe turing. So, to really get down, the thing that this does, that the other one doesn't do it, it goes down and it shatters the earth. It actually creates more pore space instead of just slicing it.
How do we, hopefully, okay. How do we develop the estimate for the capital cost of these two machines? It seems like a lot to me, but I don't, I'm not well-grounded in, you know, what these are, so.
Yeah, they're actually based on reaching out and getting sample bids.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And
But to be clear, we're not going to just
Can you move the mic back over?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
You're still, still boring.
So, you know, when it comes time to actually purchase them, we'll each, either go out with an RFP and, and take the best price, or we will often, now that we have the ability to go off of some of these natural, national co-ops, often you'll get better pricing off those.
Okay.
These are, these are based on real prices.
Okay. And I guess there is not a different attachment to the existing aeration machine that would achieve the depth cutting that you're trying to get to? You have to get this thing?
No, this, this is a really specialized piece of equipment that, to be honest, Boise Park says them, all golf courses do, the school district has them. We're a little bit behind the curve in getting one.
Okay.
We've tried to get off with the current airway system that we're using, but we're only, like I said, we're only getting this deep. And it is not something you can rent either. It's, you have to buy it.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. Good to see you, man.
Thank you.
So this one came out this spring in the, in the memo from Planning Department, and we, and went out to all the council members. We became aware of it. We're like, well, this probably lives with us, so we added it to our, our original list. So there are planned roundabouts at Locust Grove and Victory, Eagle and Amity, and Eagle and Zaldia. And as we know, ACHD doesn't do landscaping in or around the roundabouts, but they do allow cost shares, and there's an existing cost share agreement between the city and ACHD that will allow us to propose something. Right now, they, at a minimum, put in conduit for, for electricity and water to be able to run some irrigation, assuming that we will want something in there. So again, this amount does not build anything. It's not intended to. What it's intended to is just based on $3,500 per site for some concept planning and, and, you know, whether or not we need the whole amount, we'll just spend what we need. But the idea is, is some seed money to do some design work, to come back to Counsel in the next fiscal year and say, you know, confirm what you, how far you want to go and what you want to do.
I know that Councilwoman Ogland has mentioned this in the past about how ugly these things can look. The one over on Pine is getting worked on right now. It looks so much better, so.
So much better.
I mean, it's just like, it's unbelievable how cool these things can be.
Yeah.
You know, when they're maintained and look good, throw some art on there, you know, do something cool.
Yeah.
I'm down.
So these give us the initial concept design funds, not construction funds, but this money is meant to allow Counsel to decide what you want.
Yeah, I agree.
And if anybody wants these in North Meridian, you can have them.
Can we name one after Mayor Simison? Mayor Simison Roundabout.
Our last item is the
And we need roundabouts out of North Meridian.
A proposed update to our current master plan, so I can't hardly believe it, but our current master plan is five years old this year. It kind of blows my mind. But as I was looking at it, you know, we've added nearly 30,000 people to the city since it was done. If you look back at five years ago, populations were just over 90,000. Now they're estimating somewhere around 120, so we would like to update the survey. We've also added, you know, five significant new parks in those five years, so we've been busy. We'd like to get the, what they call the GRASP needs analysis updated, and then it seems like there has been some interest in revisiting the cost recovery model, so that could be part of this as well.
Steve?
Yes.
We've been doing a lot of surveys, and there's, we've got open space surveys, we've got surveys happening with community development. What, what information is this providing specific to parks? And I, I mean, I, I'm curious, it seems like Parks has a very good handle on what, what the city owns, you know, whether it's sufficient, the amount of parks that we have, the future amount of, the future parks that we need, sufficient for our population.
Yeah.
What does this provide that the city doesn't have?
Right, so the survey would be a statistically valid random sample survey that we could rely on as reflecting our community. Frankly, we don't feel directionless, you know, we've got, we, we have a good plan, but given the amount of growth that we have, we think it's time to just test those assumptions and see if they've, if those priorities have changed for, for the community in the last five years. So it's, it's a significant survey, goes much, much deeper into Parks and Recreation, amenities, programs, events than any of the other types of surveys that we have. Be glad to share with you the results. In fact, they're online if you wanted to look them up from the, the existing master plan, but it's a, it's a very in-depth look at the Parks and Rec system.
One more question on that. So is that information, is the city using that information to update the plan, or is this, is the contractor going to update the current plan? Or is this just the survey, is this just the survey that's being paid for?
Oh, no, it's, it's much more than that. The, the survey and the public outreach would be part of it. If we want to do the cost recovery model, that's a significant piece. And then the GIS-based GRASP analysis is a major component as well, that the, the contractor would have significant roles in all three of those pieces. Now, to Councilwoman Strater's question that came out last week that I, you know, responded to, so I don't, don't think I need to dwell too much on it, but for those elements that, that we can do in-house, we will do in-house. In fact, I reached out early on to test a number, got a scope back that was just under 100,000, and I said, there's pieces of this that we can do. We can cut this back. The 75,000 is half of what the original plan cost. So the original plan was 150. I'm just looking for an update. Can we update it and add the cost recovery model for half of what we did it last time? I've been told yes.
Hello? Oops. I think that's on. When is the last time we did an impact fee study, which I'm assuming is the same as the cost recovery model?
Different.
Okay. Please explain how that is different and what that specifically does.
So impact fees were just updated last year.
Okay.
And it, impact fees look at your existing level of service at a very basic level in terms of acres per thousand or in terms of indoor facilities, square feet per thousand. Project that, you use population projections and, and cost projections and say, based on growth, here's what your, what you can charge per building permit for the construction, capital only, for impact fees. Cost recovery is, is more about our fees for our programs, fees for rentals, and it's, there's the whole pyramid methodology saying certain things should be subsidized 100%, and certain things should be subsidized 0%. And there's a, a spectrum in between based on the, the public versus private benefit. And so it would be a, a deeper look at that.
When is, so when is the last time we did a cost recovery report, update, whatever it's called?
So with the last master plan, we documented our currently adopted philosophy by Counsel, but there's never been an in-depth model done. Just last fall, Finance adopted the, the policies that would establish the basis for an analysis like this, and that we would take this through that model.
Okay. I, I kind of am tracking with where Councilwoman Perot is maybe getting at or thinking. It sounds like you're really working on synergies. I know, we've talked on this. I know you've been working on trying to drive the cost down, do a lot of it in-house that you can. I, I guess what I'm a little struggling with, I feel like we have a lot of public input on some of these priorities, coming from the comprehensive plan work, coming from the open space work, and I guess I'm kind of wondering why not wait a year to do this?
If Counsel wanted to wait a year, frankly, I don't think anything falls apart from my perspective. This is the fifth of five for a reason.
Okay.
I, I, I have it on the list because I think it's important that we talk about it. We're halfway through as of this December, the, the anticipated 10-year lifespan of the overall plan. So I feel it's my duty to say, hey, Counsel, we're five years into a 10-year plan. We think it's time to update it. We've had a significant growth in our community. We think it's time to test the assumptions. If Counsel wanted to wait a year, let me know.
Okay. Well, I think they give us enough information.
Yeah. Okay.
Steve? Thanks again, Roger.
I think that is my last slide.
You good?
Thank you.
No Rachel?
I'll turn this over to Chief Plaid. You guys know by now, you know, the budget requests are in the police section.
See if he does it.
I know that Joe is our liaison, and he told me he'd be in there on the phone. I didn't know if he wanted to step out or not, so. Chris, do you want to pop? Now, Chris has gone, too. Someone will pop in there and see if he wants to join us if can.
So, Mr. Mayor Counsel, as I sat through today, I told Dean that I'd bring him a paintball gun next time, and that anyway that didn't turn their microphone on, he could just like acknowledge him from his seat and sit at and yell at everybody. He thought that was a pretty good idea, so.
Airsoft might be a little bit less messy.
So, thank you for your time. I want to open up with just a brief statement, and then we can proceed. So turbulent and stressful times does not adequately describe what our department has faced for most of 2020. Despite that, each member pours out their hearts and souls to be the most professional police department they can be for our community. We as a command staff and I as our chief are proud of what our members do day in and day out. The outpouring of public support these past few weeks has been unbelievable and is a great indication of what we are getting, what we are getting is right in providing the services they want. This type of service does not come quickly, nor does it come cheaply, but what we see on the national front validates why we cannot lower our hiring standards or our expectations we set for the employees that we hire. It is their hard work and dedication that provides the primary reason people are moving here, and that is because of public safety and the quality of life. Giving us a pleasure of being the second safest city while also being the second largest city in the state of Idaho. On Friday, I supplied you with information on our budget requests. We have eight of them this year. They're on the slides that you'll see. I don't intend to go over the slides and talk about them any further. I guess what I would do is I have the subject matter experts here. If you have a specific question to any of the slides, we're here to answer them if the executive summary did not answer them. So with that, I stand for any questions. And that is the first and the briefest I've ever been, Mr. Mayor.
Can I just say that it would be awesome if every department did that? I don't know what the history has been, but that, those, having that information before this was exceptionally helpful. I, I was able to get the same thing from my own department and maybe one other, and it was, it was very helpful.
I'm glad, God forbid. It is the third year we've done it. It is the first year we shared it with all the council. So first year I shared it with just the mayor, and then the second year I shared it with the mayor and liaison, and then this year I shared it with everyone. And really, it just puts it in context. It tells you what our thought processes are, where we're coming from, creates a dialogue, and then whatever happens, happens. So if you want to run through those slides real quick, just so they can see them in refresh, oh, I could do that. SRO corporal position, self-explanatory, dealing with Hispanic control with our SROs. We currently are going to have 10 with the new high school opening.
Chief, question on that one real quick. And I don't think they're going to, but there's talks.
Paintball gun, paintball gun.
I had a green light. How's that? Okay, this one works.
Okay, SRO, you know, there's been talk about going to a four, four-day school week. I don't know if it'll happen, but does it, how does that change things? Or will it?
So, so Mayor Counsel, that's a, that's a great question in that I can say that COVID was a very good indication of how do we adapt? And we had a contract in place that says you will pay this amount of money and this will be the service that we provide. We've just prorated. So what we will do, our contract allows us for that flexibility. The contract that's now in front of, of West State District School District allows for flexibility for that, schedule changes, any act of God, any pandemic, anything. So that's all we do is we just addressed it accordingly amended.
Okay, thanks.
Chief, so we were out of town this weekend, and we were talking and, you know, and the subject of this, this individual that I was speaking with, she works at a, at a middle school, and her SRO quit. And she, I believe she went to a different organization, law enforcement organization in the valley. Talk to me about that. Are you seeing some issues with that? Are you seeing some, I mean, I know this person, she was fantastic. Makes me scratch my head, you know? Why, why are they leaving Meridian when we're the best?
It took me a few minutes to, to grasp what, who you were talking about. Unfortunately, that is a life example of, of Meridian. This officer in particular was an over-10-year veteran for our department, was an SRO, was serving, I believe, the school that Councilwoman Borton's wife is the principal at, Victory Middle. And she got actively recruited by a neighboring police department, and they put her in that position in the same school district, but working in their jurisdiction and not ours. Well, I believe you'd have to ask that person, but it's a variety of reasons. It does have to do with pay, it does have to do with benefits, where we're sitting, where we're at, maybe other reasons as well, but those are the ones that were related to me.
How do I say? I mean, if anyone were to tell me, Craig, you make enough money, match is going to be now 100% of the time, but I'm not, I'm not a cop. I mean, it, it causes me concern a little bit. I mean, it causes me concern a little bit, makes me want to know why. And if we're doing something wrong, I want to fix it. And if we can do better, then we need to have that discussion.
Mayor Council, that, that could be a very in-depth discussion that I would love to have. I don't know if this is the venue or not. I can tell you that we should have that discussion. Because as you've noticed, over the last few weeks, some of the difficulties law enforcement has been enduring. What you see on the news is not what we have here, but we're not alienated from that. It's really, we're, we're put in that, that group whether we want to or not. We already have the, and it really kind of goes into another slide or two. Can you just go on to the recruiting, well, actually, go on to the recruiting slide back one. The mayor and I discussed this particular position, and I think, Councilman Borton, you even questioned me on it, whether it's needed. And I believe it's needed more now than it ever was. And the reason why is we have a very small applicant pool of people that want to be in law enforcement. And then out of those that want to be in law enforcement, only a very small fraction of them are qualified to be in law enforcement. And then when you have that small a pool of people, and everybody wants them, you have to do everything in your power to be as competitive as you possibly can be. Otherwise, they're going to go, why should I go here and not go there? The days of people coming to us because they want to work for us no longer exist. Yes, you might get one or two, or more of the people that aren't qualified. You've got to go out there and actively seek these individuals, convince them why they're good at their job, or why they have the traits that we're looking for, and then convince them to take on a job, frankly, that they're going to be targeted, they're going to risk their lives for, they're going to be called every single name in the, in the book sometimes. And you've got to be able to dangle something in front of them and say, yeah, come work for us. So.
So, a couple of questions related to that. What, this is, I'm going to play a little bit of devil's, devil's advocate here. Why not take these funds and, and increase the, the offerings to the positions that, that, you know, to some of the positions? Instead of, instead of hiring this, why not take those funds on an annual basis and increase the pay or, or offer more benefits, which I imagine is why Crystal's up here?
I'm up here for two reasons, actually, and I want to be respectful.
To create those incentives. So, I, that's not, I'm not making any particular statement about this position or not. I'm just trying to understand the thinking behind it. You know, the military has used recruiters for years, and they need them because you're, you're, you know, there's an element of asking somebody to come into a situation that's not safe. And that sounds to me like that's a similar concept here for this. But the other question I have is, how long has, has there been a situation where you have not been able to recruit the amount of, of staff or, and/or officers needed? And how long do you anticipate that to continue, such that this position would need to be a permanent one?
Mayor Council, I would like to point out, first of all, that we discussed this position has to be a certified officer for a couple of reasons. One is, they have to understand the job. But more importantly, if this position is not needed or is not effective, they're already a police officer, and they can go fill the role of many open slots that we already have.
Okay.
Or they could fulfill a role in a, a training position within our academy. So it wouldn't be a waste of a resource. It would just be a reclassification of their job assignment if it was not effective. How long do I anticipate it being needed? Forever. I really do. I think you're going to see more and more people leave this profession that says, I want absolutely nothing to do with this job, period. And we have to be able to offer them something because we're right now are the ones that reap the benefits. And those benefits are going to go away if we can't attract quality people. And so I do believe the position's going to go on forever. Will it be a recruiting position full-time? Who knows? It could be three positions recruiting full-time because we are currently actively seeking to fill about 12 slots. And before we came full, we've lost three more since then. To take the story just a little bit further about the person you're alluding to, is we've lost two to that agency in the last 10 months.
Maybe that leads me into a question.
So why are you here?
Because I want to make sure that we're not entering into a personnel discussion at a budget hearing. So I'm here to help assist with the conversation and navigate as we should appropriately.
Try to keep us out of trouble, Crystal. Thank you. Crystal, how, give, give me a context for, I don't know if we want to use the example of that competing police department, but clearly that appears that's an issue. So how does our, how, how does our pay, compensation, our benefits, how do those line up with, let's just take that other agency as an example because clearly they're a competitor for the same talent pool. How do those things line up?
So, to address the question about how do we prepare and assess our compensation program and our benefit program, so our benefit program is across the board for all of our employees, and we do annually assess that. We take a look at that. We do pulse checks with other agencies. We speak to and obtain information, and we take a look at what we're currently offering. It's also a balance of Meridian and what we want to do versus what we can afford to do. We have separate pay studies that are done for the general employee pool, the police step plan. HR department partners with Lieutenant Stokes and his team in regards to compensation and pay. We have a structured system where we take a look at different pay plans alternately every other year. When we have negotiations, we take a different approach to that as well to assess our competitiveness in the valley. You will see at times that we come forward with recommendations that may or may not at that time be able to be supported, but we are still constantly monitoring and pulsing where we are in relation to said agency or any other agency deemed to be a competitive recruitment pool for us, or recruitment agency away from us.
And just talking about our neighbor to the east, I don't think there's one job in our city that honestly competes at their level in any sector and any department. So it's, that, that's a challenge citywide. I mean, that standpoint.
So I guess maybe a follow-up question. From, we're in an exceptionally difficult year from, from an economic standpoint, right? Like just completely an outlier to, in my mind, our unemployment rate is multiples even of Boise. So our community is experiencing a lot of hardship. I think that creates a very challenging environment. We've got the pandemic. We've got one in four families going to get, either skipping meals or getting assistance, I mean nationally. So there's just a really, really tough environment. And I, I'm tracking with the mayor's thinking of consistency. I'm tracking with the idea of, you know, your, your base and, and kind of reflecting ongoing costs. But I'm also, I'm trying to really dial in on, is there something specific within this department that you have an HR recommendation on in terms of, you know, what you think, what you, what, what you recommend in terms of how to approach compensation, et cetera, in the, in the upcoming year? And then are there non-compensation related benefits, you know, that we want to go through that also move the needle? Just, I, I'd like to hear the HR kind of market perspective on that.
Well, they put you on the spot.
That's okay. That's what I'm here for. So no problem. So I will give you, it's actually a partnership, to be honest with you. And so it is a partnership between HR and the police department, specifically Lieutenant Stokes, who leads that effort on behalf of the police department. Every other year, we go through a police step analysis. We evaluate our current step plan. We evaluate it against several other entities that collectively we have identified to be our market competitors, if you will. The police department, it's very difficult. I understand what you're saying. It is something that we've had great discussions about as well. It was not an easy decision for the mayor or the leadership team to come forward after doing an analysis with the number of positions that the department is facing to fill in addition to the challenges alone that the chief has simply stated. A pool of employer, a prospective pool of, a pool of anyone who would opt into law enforcement, and of that limited pool, those that would be qualified. Compensation, pay, and benefits are always going to be a challenge when you're faced with other organizations who have their own budgets, that have their own approaches, have their own philosophical strategies. From the HR perspective, we want and encourage all of, we want to have a competitive compensation program for any employee here at the city, and that's what we strive for. There's a balance that comes along with all of that. This year was very, very difficult. I feel had we not had the pandemic, had we not encountered the, the current issues that we have today with our unemployment, with the hardships based on our citizens, we may have been in front of you today simply with a different recommendation.
Start it up specifically for the police or for the, for the city as a whole?
I think maybe for the city as a whole, honestly.
We would have, we would have had a different recommendation.
We tackle them.
I just didn't know which, which way you were talking.
Well, she was asking about the police department, so I was trying to stay focused on that. But across the whole, for the city, yes. We would have had a different conversation. You would have seen different numbers in your budget, and we would have probably engaged in a different conversation. But we had to take all of those factors into consideration as well. And the decisions that you make this budget cycle will have an impact on next year's budget cycle as well. And we know that. We've engaged in those conversations. We've answered those questions, and we're, we're transparent with that. And we want you all to have the information you need to make a solid decision. But we are where we are. We are where the economy is. Our citizens are in a situation that the unemployment, the hardships feeding their families. We have, we looked at other ways, including the police department, that we could show our, that we value our employees by trying to keep their benefits whole, that we have knowing that we still need to continue to do more, hopefully later, sooner rather than later. Looking at pay and those types of things, we haven't had layoffs. Our employees are all still employed. I mean, there's a lot of factors when you talk about total compensation. So it's, it's a struggle and a challenge at best to come forth with the best recommendation that we feel at this point in time for any employee across the city with our current state and the uncertainty of what we're facing over the next year to 18 months.
And I will say, I mean, from my racist set we're Dave sitting now, you know, what I've seen this city and the council do for the last 12, 13 years is treat all employees equally. If there's a, if this council wants to go a different direction and start treating employees as different work groups, I think that's a separate conversation for you all to have and take that into consideration. But, you know, I think that one decision you have right now, the way we treat it, you treat one, you better treat the next, and the next, and the next likewise unless we go a different direction. Mr. Mayor?
So, I could be wrong. Most of the time I am. But I was under the impression that, you know, obviously firefighters have their union, and so that's negotiated separately. And the police department has a step plan. And so I thought we had those, sticking with the police, I thought we had the step plan in place so we, there wouldn't be like any negotiation or any, it would just.
Oh, Crystal's feet.
Yeah, so.
So, we've tried to be fair and consistent with all employees across the board in regards to benefits. Frankly, we are different. We do put our life on the line. We worked when everybody else was at home on COVID. We are facing the things that we're facing today. We are different, and we should be treated different. And this puts me in a difficult situation trying to respect those I work with and those I work for. But you talk about transparency. We hired a consultant to come in and review the work. The consultant makes a recommendation. We calculate that recommendation.
What is this, Don, Chief?
The last 10 months, pre-COVID. So the problems that existed, existed pre-COVID, are going to exist post-COVID. If we don't take the consultant's recommendation into a factor, you're 15% below market on the entry level, some as high as 20% below market in the officer level, 17% below market on the top level, that problem doesn't go away. It just gets bigger next year. So we get all the struggles. We look at the perceptions externally, but you also have to look at the internal perceptions as well, and what you're asking your employees to do, and what they're facing, and what they continue to go through. And if I give them nothing, they have no reason to continue to provide the services that they provide for you today. That's why you're going to see them go to those other places. Now, to be just a little bit more transparent, that's only on wages. When you want to throw the benefits in there as well, we can't even compete.
So I don't have the history on this. So you had a consultant come in, assess the wages, give you an analysis of the differences between what is currently offered and what, what should be expected to be offered. Couple of questions. Is that based, is there an inclusion of cost of living in that? Because it sounds to me like what Crystal's describing is sort of, hey, let's compare Meridian and its size of city and the expectations, and here's, here's the job description. Let's compare it with a job description, similar size city. Is there cost of living taken into what you do and then the cost, and then your consultant? The other question is, is if you receive that information from the consultant, was it not reflected in the budget request? And if not, then, then share with us why not? Other than the general understanding that there's been economic changes?
Who do you want to go first? Go ahead.
Or I can talk, whichever one you want. It was considered through the whole process, and it was decided that based upon the current situation, I think you're the one that mentioned it, the highest unemployment rate, or might have been, Councilman Ms. Frager, highest unemployment rate in the history of Idaho. People out of jobs, people struggling to get their, their unemployment benefits still to this day. But we all stayed whole. The city treated us well, and we are all employed, and we're all healthy and all safe. And then the unknowns of what the budget might look like in the, in the future. You've seen some of the revenues drop and some of that stuff. And so a hard decision was made to not push forward on those recommendations. I had the same conversation that we continue to have right now, and then people get paid to make those decisions.
So, I, Crystal question. And I, well, I'll start by saying, like, at least in my conversations with the mayor and how I was thinking about it, I very much do think that the consistency of treating employees consistently, I think that's important. The only thing that I think would make me look at that a little differently is if, Crystal, if you're telling me that citywide, we're 15% lower than our competitors from a pay perspective, that sounds consistent. But if the police department specifically is exceptionally below market for what they are doing, that might make me think about it a little bit differently. If one department is particularly far off their market If one department is particularly far off their market benchmarks compared to the percentage for the rest of the city, I think we need to know that.
Councilwoman Strater. So what I'd like to do is answer Ms. Councilwoman's pro question about the market, the market aspect of the studies, and whether or not HR does a separate market study in conjunction with the police department, or does the consultant do that? And thank you so much, Lieutenant Stokes, for stepping up.
And cost of living.
And the cost of living. We call it a market. We don't, we don't observe COLA under policy here at the city. It's the same thing. So thank you for the correction. We assess the COLA or the market as a whole, for the western region specifically, a lot of factors that go into that, the CPI, things like that, that we can certainly talk about. So the, the consultant that was hired, which we hire every other year to take a review of the step plan, is looking at the actual step plan, the actual wages of those step plans. There's some discussion in regards to inflate, but we don't, at that point in time when we start the process 10 months ago to where we were five months ago, when we landed with the end product of a recommendation and an analysis to where we are today, so much has changed. But we do look at that citywide and apply that consideration across any compensation program we offer here at the city. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I, I really want to get, I mean, I'm self-employed. I've been self-employed for 10 years. And so my metric of what is considered fair wages and what is a, a living wage in our city is probably different than my fellow council members and maybe others. But in general, I'm struggling with just the wages across the board that they're too low. I mean, just, just what it costs to live here, I'm just going to be really candid and say I, I, I could live on some of these wages. I mean, I'm just being really candid to say that. And so that doesn't mean that I'm recommending any, any particular change to the budget. I understand why the budget is set the way that it's set. But I, I can understand why there would be a difficulty in hiring many of these positions at the wages that they're set at.
So to have a fair market, market competitive wage, you're looking at a 10% spread either direction from the market value of a job. Okay? So first of all. And we assess all of that, whether it's through the step plan, whether it's through the general employee compensation program. I'm going to blend and answer both of the council members' questions. So if I don't answer it all specifically, please refresh me with the remaining part of your question. So when we take a look at that, no, not all of our positions across the city consistently are outside of a fair market competitive wage for a position, because we assess that every year through the general employee plan and the separate analysis for the police department. Specifically as it relates to the police department, what the chief is communicating is correct based on the analysis that has been completed. And depending on the level within the step plan, you have significant differences as far as falling, not falling behind what we would consider our competitor. From a recruitment perspective, from an attraction perspective, and potentially we're seeing some and could see, don't know what the future holds, a retention perspective, there's a lot of moving parts to that, to that piece. But I'll let the chief speak further on that, or I'm happy to, or we can certainly ask the mayor to weigh in as well. So if your concern is we have something across the city that we are 10, 15, 20%, no, we are not. We post that every year.
Sorry, maybe I could clarify just for a second. What I want to know is, for the average, I would like to know, for the average employee in this general plan, what the discount, the percentage discount on average to market for those positions compared to the average discount to market for the police department? What I'm trying to figure out is, is the police department exceptionally far off their benchmark relative to the general employees of the city? Do they have an exceptionally bad place they're starting from that's different?
So I don't have that full analysis in front of me based on the information that I've seen and the studies that I've been involved with and/or led myself, is that they, yes, the police department has a significantly steeper challenge in regards to compensation, in regards to maintaining a competitiveness against other law enforcement agencies specifically.
I can add some perspectives, maybe to help.
He might have some numbers with him, I'm not sure.
It's on.
Yeah, so just a couple of clarifications. The police step plan is, has been looked at historically every other year, so every two years. And different things happen with the general city employees, and then fire does their thing. Crystal could speak more to how often the general city employees' wages looked at. I think it's every year.
Yes.
And so we're not every year. We're every other year, we do an analysis. We've talked over the last two cycles about, hey, we need to look at this every year so we don't get so far behind. I think we were in a good spot before earthquakes and pandemics and everything else. I don't, I don't know what the future holds. There is a lot of data here. When you look at this, and I've been a part of this, I think, 12 years, 10 or 12 years. But the five agencies that we look at, we lump ourselves in, and then we grab four more that are local. We are the lowest paid for starting officer of all of them. That's a problem.
You know, some more chance.
Yeah, and I, I think I can list the agencies that we use for comparison. Is there any issue with that? So it would be the ones that would come to mind. Ada County, Boise City, Garden City, and Napa. So we're the lowest starting wage of, of those. As we sit today, we are 9% below market, right there. Where we think we need to be is that 15% the chief's talking about. And it changes as you go through our step plan. With what we came up with, the recommendation using the consultant and, and our work group, there's some places in our step plan that would only see a 1% growth because they're in market, right? So it's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We've seen significant moves in the last two years at the bottom of the market, which are a clear indication of how hard it is to hire police officers. I believe, and Scott or Brian can answer this, I think we're still trying to fill positions you gave us in 2017. It's pretty telling. So there's a lot there. We have room to make up at the bottom. We have some adjustments to make in the middle, and we have room to make up at the top. I'm often asked, why does the top matter? Well, the step plan has to work from beginning to end for all kinds of reasons. At the bottom, it hinders recruitment, hiring, all those things, retention at certain points. At the top, you have to fill these positions as they come open throughout, you know, somebody's career and people retiring. And honestly, we have trouble promoting positions, and we are facing an exchange of command staff. We've talked about this in years past. Almost this entire command staff is under five years, so you have to start preparing and growing people to take these positions. But they can't take a significant pay cut to take on the extra responsibility, and that's honestly where we sit. So that's the top and the bottom.
Come on.
Yes.
Did you just say that you have? No, it's not you. It's me. I'm mad at myself. Doing this for almost three years, didn't get it figured out by now. So are you saying that there are lieutenants that get paid less than those that are, don't have as much responsibility as?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So it, not at an hourly rate, but when you promote to the rank of lieutenant, you become exempt.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things that a, a top-tier sergeant has that a lieutenant loses. And, and honestly, where we sit today is not ideal, and it's, it's, we're here now, but we're here because in past cycles, we have honestly neglected the top to make the bottom work. And that's why you only need a 1% adjustment in some of these sergeant ranks where you need 17% at the top. Because, you know, Crystal's been there the whole way. We have foregone adjustments in certain places to get the adjustments where we thought we needed them. But yeah, so, so you promote today from a, a top step sergeant to a bottom step lieutenant. It's like an 85 cent an hour raise, and then you become exempt. So that's the, you know, just things that I think human beings, and especially cops, look at. Holiday pay, overtime, instructor pay, all of that is gone. So it, yes.
For $850.
Right. So, you know, th- those issues exist. And we, we try to, try to fix them, but, you know, we can only work with what we have. There's been some cans kicked down the road over the years that, that happens. I get it. What we're dealing with now with the step plan is we need to fix the structure. That's kind of step one. And then adjust to put ourselves in what we believe is a competitive position. And our competitive position, it doesn't make us, it, it would probably drop us about in the middle of that agents, all those agencies that we've analyzed. So it would drop us right there in the middle. But, you know, we're, we're still, like, for that recruit officer, we're still, you know, below the highest by a pretty good margin. But we think at least it would make us a little more competitive. We feel we have the best, you know, best place to work, right? And that does have value. But you got to get people in the door, and they've got to see it, you know? And then keeping them here. And honestly, I do worry about retention. I really do. Because a, a well-trained, qualified police officer, even in today's world, is, you know, you look at the other agencies, you know, around here or across the country, is, they're such a premium, there's, there's an attraction to stealing them because they're largely trained, they're plug and play. Our officers that have left recently are going to positions, they're not starting at the bottom of that organization, they're being plugged into a lateral or better position than they left us for. And I don't blame other agencies for doing that. It's, it's, it's tough sledding, and it has been for 20 years, and it's not going to get any easier. Even during the recession, you know, back in the late 2000s, there was no uptick in police applications or people interested in this work, and it just gets worse every year.
So counsel, just some food for thoughts, and maybe we can bring this to a close, and we can always come back and have a more in-depth conversation if needed. So chief and I talked when we went through this process. We could go in and make cer- certain adjustments within the step plan at certain levels without doing the full thing. Were there options that, all these positions, he did say he would give up these positions to do the step plan? You have a third option. Do you have a lot of unfunded positions in the, in the police department that you could defund or take out of the budget and use those funds to bring in alignment the step plan and wages to, without having an ongoing budgetary impact, but balance out where the needs are? Those are options if you want to consider them. You know, I think at the end of the day, my only caution to you is, you've, you've got 400 other employees here in the city that we're going to be mindful of whatever actions you take and how you value that, because of this conversation, I see Dell over there with his engineers. Where's Cameron? Cameron with his planners. They all have the same, the same concern with losing people to other entities. So while this may be a very specific one that you do think should be treated differently, it's not an isolated conversation within the city, within every department. I, I could have every director come and give me a reason why every single position in the city, they think they should be paid more. On a personal level, and this will not make me popular, but I am concerned about a escalating cost of services where we are, and every agency is trying to one-up the, the next agency in the valley to get the best. That is going to have an ongoing cost. If, if we raise up ours, Boise, Napa, Ada County are going to do the same. And that's, that is going to be an ongoing cycle that has no end to it, because we're always going to be trying to raise our, our level to be competitive. And it's a self-fulfilling prophecy if we all keep raising above and above in a market system. And that's, and it will have a long-term financial impact, but it may be difficult for us to provide other services in the city. So just be, I want to just be mindful and put that out there for your consideration. I, I didn't think this was going to be the last time we had, heard this conversation. I know it would happen today. But I, I would suggest that if counsel wants to have a more robust conversation, continue, we can do this next Tuesday and have Crystal present the step plan information that you guys are, that was not brought forward. I do support doing this every year, not every other year. But every other year, the impact to the budget is very difficult to go across the board for everybody. So that every year adjustment is what I support and what I believe. This is the reason why I've stated, if you don't take the 3% this year, next year, I would encourage you to look at foregone to make up this, this ground. So that has always been my, my proponent, that this is a one-year, don't take the 3%. But next year, consider if the economy is back at a place where people are working to, to make that ground up. May not be popular, but from a, but from a recommendation standpoint, that's, that's where I've been coming from. So unless there's something specific, I, I would like to let people get back to their evening at this point in time, and, and we can talk if you'd like to bring this up at the work, at the workshop on Tuesday. Even though the chief may not be there, I'm sure you can have someone that can be present for that conversation.
Mr. Mayor, I would be in favor of that, as well as if there's a comfort level with maybe some more information about what that consultant shared. I don't have a way to compare what's requested here and what sort of the ideal, the ideal request would be based on the information that the consultant received. I'd like to see the two side by side so that we can truly make a decision about numbers, because that's ultimately what we're trying to do. And, and that would be whether we use that information or not, that would be helpful for me as a brand and council member to get a, to get a bigger picture and get a perspective. I agree with you that you, your positions, I, I understand what the mayor's saying about all of the, all of the employees in the city, but I think there is some consideration to be made for the, the fact that there's a safety element involved in what you do. There are in other, in other departments as well. You're not the only department that has safety concerns, for sure. But, but I, what I wanted to say is, thank you very much for coming and answering these difficult questions. I know from my perspective, these are not intended to try to have you justify things as much as it's just getting an understanding of what's going on and, and how we can actually help solve these challenge, you know, how we can be, create a solution for you and not make it harder for you to do what you do versus, it's definitely not, at least for me, in an intention of, an element of justifying your, your pay. So I wanted to say that I, I'm in an industry where there are four service people for every one product. So I'm in phenomenally competitive industry, and every single time I sit down with a customer, I am justifying my paycheck. I'm justifying the service I provide. So I know it's hard to do. It's hard to come every year and say, hey, this is, I need to justify my paycheck. It's very difficult. I do it, I do it every time I sit down with a client of mine. So kudos to you for doing that. We know, I know it's hard to do, so.
So, Mayor, Mayor and Counsel, I would just say that I, I wasn't prepared to have this discussion today. It kind of caught me by surprise. So anything that the mayor shared with you today, he's already shared with us, so nothing is a surprise. I'm just left with trying to figure out what to do, because although I understand everything he said and we've said, is right this minute, I have agencies actively recruiting our people. And so then I just have to roll over and say, okay, have them. That's all I have right now. And so I have to, I have to fight. Fight for them. And that's what I'm here for. And we would love to have that discussion. Burl's the expert. He has the figures, but everything we've talked about, and this has been awkward because my liaison was supposed to be here, because we've shared everything. All the data that you are requesting, he has. Yet he's on his other job, so, you know, we got to, be mindful of that, too. So I appreciate the dialogue we had today. We'll have it more. Just let us know what you want. It's a difficult conversation for me to have, but I will, I will have it.
And I don't think the chief has ever heard me suggest defunding current positions. And I don't think the chief has ever heard me suggest defunding current positions to help cover.
No, that, that part was new to me and that won't be popular either, but that's, you know.
It's, it's easier to bring them on in the future when the need is there if you can't fill them to keep the ones you have losing more, but, you know.
I, I did say that I'd give up all those positions for that. I think that was in the executive summary as well. There is one position in there that we probably shouldn't give up though, and that's the record specialist position. I know we didn't talk about it today. And that's because we have 645 public records requests citywide for the city, with the exception of the police department. The police department has 8,500 alone. And then we're also mandated to put out tow impound letters to both the registered owner and to the lien holder 24 hours with, within 24 hours of impound in their vehicles. We need a admin person to do that because currently the way we were, we need more help because we are backed up, we're paying overtime to do public records requests to meet state law. We're using code enforcement officers to do the impound sheets and they can't be out in the field. And I'm down three code enforcement officers and that's a whole different topic, so.
Chief, would you be comfortable?
That would be a position we would need.
Would you be comfortable when you come, or if whoever comes on Tuesday to, or send us a, some communication about your preference of the three options or some feedback on those three different proposals that the mayor mentioned? Or none of them, but just some, your, your feedback on?
I, I, I think in fairness, we need to share those with the mayor and I, I can include you as well as, we could talk about those within our group and then give you our thoughts.
I think this thing might be dying. Just one more thing, if maybe Crystal, you and I could follow up afterward. Because again, I think what I'm really looking for is trying to have a, a comparison of the average somehow, somehow a common measurement tool to understand how individual departments may compare to a market average for the city. And, and again, understanding it's not about treating a group differently, but if a group is in a very adverse position relative to market that the others do not share, then that, that doesn't seem fair to some extent. So, I, I want to, I want to contextualize a little bit more. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate the really candid, difficult discussion. And, yeah, I have to also probably apologize to the mayor because I may have thrown a little bit of a curve just because it's a little different than our discussions, but I, I started to think about it, some, part of the comparison across the whole city versus an individual department. I'm not saying that's where we're going to go necessarily, but I think we have to have that information.
With that, do I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, I'll just, if everything of us say an aye?
Aye.
Close name? Yeah, I have it.